Thank you, thank you, and good morning to everyone. We're going to get started. Before we begin the council session today, I will make the following announcement. Due to the public health emergency, City Council is currently meeting remotely. We are using Microsoft Teams to make this remote meeting possible. Instruction for how the public may view the meeting and offer public comment are included in the stated meeting notice that was published in the Daily News, Enquirer, and the Legal Intelligencer prior to the meeting. It can also be found on P H L council dot com. I now note that the hour has come. The clerk will please call the roll to take attendance, and members that are in attendance, please indicate that you are present to ensure that your image is displayed on the screen. Mr. Decker, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Good morning, Council President, colleagues, and the City of Philadelphia. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Good morning, Council President and colleagues and City of Philadelphia. I am present.
Good morning.
Councilman Dom.
Morning, Council President, colleagues, and Philadelphia.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Gauthier.
Good morning, Council President, colleagues, and Philadelphia. Present.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Good morning, Council President, good morning, colleagues, and good morning to the City of Sister Lila.
Good morning, Councilwoman.
Councilman Green.
Good morning.
Councilman, do we need to hear the Councilman Green? I wasn't sure.
Yeah, yeah, it's needed.
I'm sorry. Good morning, Council President. I'm trying to work with my technology. Good morning to my fellow members of council, council staff, and to the citizens of the City of Philadelphia.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Gimm.
Good morning, Council President, good morning, colleagues, and good morning, Philadelphia. I'm present.
Good morning.
Councilman Heenan.
Morning, Council President, good morning, colleagues, and good morning to all special guests and those joining us in today's session.
Councilman Johnson.
Good morning, Council President, good morning, colleagues. Still advocating for justice for all the families who have lost loved ones to senseless gun violence in the City of Philadelphia.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Councilman Jones.
Good morning, Mr. President, good morning, colleagues, good morning, Philadelphia.
Councilman O.
Good morning, Council President, good morning, colleagues, I'm present.
Councilman O'Neil.
Good morning, everyone.
Councilwoman Parker.
Good morning, Mr. President, good morning, colleagues, and good morning to the viewing
Councilwoman Kenone Sanchez.
Good morning, Council President, good morning, colleagues.
Councilman Squilla.
Good morning, Council President, good morning, colleagues, present.
Councilman Thomas.
Good morning, Council President, good morning, colleagues, present.
Council President Clark.
Good morning to everyone. Hope you've established some bar. Council will now come to order. We're going to get started. And this morning, to give our invitation, the Chair recognizes Reverend Kathy Mitchell of Triumph Baptist Church. She is here today as the guest of Councilman Thomas. I would ask all members and guests to please bow your heads for the invitation. Reverend, please proceed.
Good morning. Shall we pray? God, our Father and Creator, Jesus Christ, the Son and Redeemer, Holy Ghost, our God and Counselor. We give you praise and thanksgiving for your holy presence and being on one accord at this solemn moment. This prayer is one of faith, and it comes through human lips that are sometimes full of doubt. We are relying on your goodness and believing on your promises. We come on behalf of the Athens of America, the city of brotherly love and sisterly affection, the birthplace of American democracy. Be known and acknowledged that the earth is the Lord's, the fullness thereof, the world and they that dwell therein. So this prayer is one of intercession for neighborhoods and communities, parks and rivers, colleges and universities, malls and office buildings, businesses and restaurants, banks and libraries, hospitals and schools, churches and mosques and synagogues and temples, stadiums and theaters, museums and the media, SEPTA and Amtrak, the Philadelphia International Airport, bus lines and taxi cabs, police and firefighters, first responders, the sanitation department and the streets department. Heavenly Father, this prayer is for the City Council of Philadelphia. We pause for prayer not just to do all of the talking, but to also listen to each other and to you. At this very moment, wickedness, evil, and indiscriminate acts of violence are still at work. We ask for your truth and justice to prevail. Use the members of the City Council as instruments of your grace and your glory. Give them the strength and the stamina to face stress and pressure when it appears. Infuse them with insight and fortitude to expect the unexpected and to develop ethical behavior to demonstrate and develop true patriotism. We lift them up to you, as well as their families, their loved ones, keep their homes safe and secure. We pray for them to have tough minds and tender hearts, to be as wise as servants and as harmless as doves. Sometimes they have to take the heat when it is not their fault, and attacks will be up close and personal. We rely to take control and divide resources and face challenges and prioritize decisions. Lord God, they represent people, some who trust them and some who do not. We pray for calmness of spirit, clarity of thought and speech, and we ask for an enduring anointing to be poured out on each and every one of them. If my people who are called by my name shall humble themselves and pray, and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, then will I hear from heaven. We want you to hear from us, Lord. We want you to bow down your ear. We want you to forgive our sin and heal our land and move by your spirit like you've never moved before. Come by here, Lord, bless us in spite of us. We need your peace, we need your power, we need your presence. Somebody's praying, Lord. Come on by here. In the name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
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 Thank you so much, Reverend. We really appreciate you being here today. Thank you. Our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, June 17, 2021, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, June 17, 2021 be approved.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded at the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, June 17, 2021. Stand approved, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Ayes have it, and the Journal was approved. And our next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the members of council, there are no requests for leaves of absence today.
Chair, thanks to Councilwoman. Our next order of business is communications, and I want to ask Mr. Decker to please read the messages from the mayor and any other communication that he may have in his possession.
Well, the mayor, the president, and members of the council of the City of Philadelphia, I am pleased to advise you that on June 23, 2021, I signed the remaining bills which were passed by council at its session on June 10, 2021, and I am transmitting for the consideration of your honorable body, a resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority deeds conveying fees simple titled to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the values and improvements they're on situate in the third councilmatic district, and a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank deeds conveying title of certain properties located in the third councilmatic district, and a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 4974 Kershaw Street, 4978 Kershaw Street, 4980 Kershaw Street, 4222 Powelton Avenue, and 3803 Fairmount Avenue located in the third councilmatic district, and a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank deeds conveying title of certain properties located in the first councilmatic district, and a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank deeds conveying title of certain properties located in the fourth councilmatic district, and a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 217 East Lipicott Street, 1912 North Leaf Gou Street, and 1944 North Fifth Street located in the seventh councilmatic district, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. And our next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions, and by way of a reminder, we are asking that all resolutions, including privileged resolutions, be placed on the final passage calendar for the next session of council unless they are being referred to committee. In our current remote environment, this procedure will provide the appropriate opportunity for public comments. I'd like to thank you very much in advance for your anticipated cooperation. Mr. Decker, please read the titles of the legislation in being offered today by the members.
Yes, Mr. President. Councilwoman Parker offers on behalf of Council President Clark two bills and one resolution, entitled an ordinance authorizing revision of lines and grades under portion of city plan number 120 by striking from the city plan and vacating Nicholas Street and Turner Street each from 20th Street to 21st Street and reserving and placing on the city plan rights of way.
For the committee.
And an ordinance providing for the submission to the qualified electors of the City of Philadelphia of an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Code Charter relating to the hiring of local residents under public works contracts with the city. And a resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Code Charter relating to the hiring of local residents under public works contracts with the city. Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson offers four resolutions, entitled a resolution authorizing the Committee on Law and Government to hold public hearings to examine the benefits of providing childcare in courtrooms for jurors and others involved in court business and to evaluate the feasibility of instituting such childcare system in Philadelphia.
Please count them.
And a resolution recognizing the school district of Philadelphia for becoming the first council in the school district to acquire electronics buses.
Next session, next council session.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Commerce and Economic Development to hold hearings on the economic impact of the film industry in Philadelphia.
This week's calendar.
And a resolution honoring and congratulating Ms. Opal Lee for her tireless efforts to have Juneteenth recognized as the national holiday. Mr. President, Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson would like to be recognized for a motion on this resolution.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit your consideration of this resolution on today's final passage calendar.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution will be on today's calendar.
Councilwoman Gimm offers three resolutions, entitled a resolution calling on Mayor James F. Kenny and his administration to work collaboratively with City Council as well as business, labor, and diverse community stakeholders to establish a commission on tax equity and growth, which would examine and assess the city's tax structure in advance, a tax plan that centers racial equity and inclusive growth.
There is.
No requests, Mr. President.
There will be on next session's calendar.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring Mayor James F. Kenny's administration, the first judicial district, and organizational partners for establishing Philadelphia's eviction, diversion, and mental assistance programs that have succeeded in keeping individuals and families housed, as well as protecting the public health during the COVID-19 pandemic and becoming a model program for the nation. Mr. President, Councilwoman Gimm wishes to be recognized in this resolution.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Thank you so much, Council President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit consideration of this resolution on today's final passage calendar.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution will be on today's final passage calendar.
And a resolution authorizing the City Council Committee on Children and Youth to hold hearings on Philadelphia's juvenile probation system, examining opportunities to reduce racial inequities, review formal supervision and confinement, and support youth accessing programming, employment, and other resources.
Today's calendar.
Councilman Heenan offers one bill and two resolutions, entitled an ordinance amending chapter 13, 300 of the Philadelphia Code, titled Water Pipe to Require Disclosure of the Ownership Structure of Water and Sewer Lines. And a resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the East Fanango Industrial Urban Manure Area identified by house numbers and street addresses as 2929 Kingston Street and 2940 East Fanango Street. Mr. President, Councilman Heenan would like to be recognized for a motion.
Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Council President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit the consideration of this resolution at today's session of council.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded that the rules of council be suspended for a lawful consideration in this session's council, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution will be on today's final passage calendar.
And a resolution honoring and congratulating Reverend Joseph Templeon on his 25th jubilee. Mr. President, Councilman Heenan would like to be recognized on this resolution as well.
Here again, Councilwoman Gimm.
Thank you again, Council President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit the consideration of this resolution at today's session of council.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that will be on today's final passage calendar.
Councilman Jones offers, on behalf of Council President Clark, a resolution authorizing the Committee on Public Safety to hold hearings regarding creation of a program of voluntary public service work to be included as an alternative to criminal sentences.
That will be on today's final passage calendar.
And on his own behalf, Councilman Jones offers a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank deeds conveying title of certain properties located in the fourth councilmatic district pursuant to the requirements of the Commonwealth Land Bank Act. Mr. President, Councilman Jones would like to be recognized on this resolution.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended as to allow final consideration of this resolution in today's final passage calendar.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that will be on today's final passage calendar.
Councilwoman Kenone Sanchez offers one resolution, entitled a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 217 East Lipicott Street, 1912 North Leaf Gou Street, and 1944 North Fifth Street located in the seventh councilmatic district. Mr. President, Councilwoman Kenone Sanchez wishes to be recognized for a motion on this resolution.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kenone Sanchez.
Thank you, Council President. In light of our recess for the summer, I want to move that the rules of council be suspended as to permit consideration of this resolution on today's final passage.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that will be on today's final passage.
Councilman Green offers one bill and two resolutions, entitled an ordinance amending chapter 17, 1600 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Economic Opportunity Plans by establishing new definitions and clarifying the manner in which credit is given for M W D S B E participation.
That will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Finance and the Committee on Transportation and Public Utilities to conduct joint hearings regarding the sustainability and diversification of the Philadelphia Gas Works.
And that will be on today's final passage calendar.
And a resolution recognizing Kenneth C. Frazier upon the occasion of his retirement as chief executive officer of Merck and Code. Mr. President, Councilman Green would like to be recognized in this resolution.
Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit first reading of this resolution for today's final passage.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that will be on today's final passage calendar.
Thank you.
Councilman Dom offers one resolution, entitled a resolution authorizing the Committee on Commerce and Economic Development to hold a hearing to examine the exclusion of the Israeli food truck Moshava from a subsequently canceled cultural fair in Philadelphia, to raise awareness of a recent rise in antisemitism, and to discuss best practices for organizations and cultural event planners facing similar situations in the future.
That's for a hearing?
Yes, Mr. President.
Thank you. That will be on today's final passage. Councilman Dom, I'm sorry. Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President. Over the past weekend, Moshava, a food truck serving Israeli food, was actually excluded from a cultural event called a Taste of Home, and Moshava was disinvited from participating in the event due to threats received by the organizers of the event regarding the truck's presence there. I started receiving phone calls over the weekend, and I was very upset by this, and I was upset for the food truck owner, who I subsequently met with and spoke with. I was upset for all the participants who were hoping to share a bit of their culture with others, and as a member of the Jewish community, I was again reminded that antisemitism persists in this country. I'll share a quick story. When I was 12 years old, this is what came back to me, living in Fort Lee, New Jersey, we lived in a 63-unit apartment building. Our apartment was 800 square feet. The rent was $100 a month. My brother was 16, I'm 12, live with my parents, and we had no hot water for two weeks, and my mother called the landlord in some location I'd never heard of, called Lower Marion, actually. And a month later, because my mother complained to the mayor we had no hot water, the only three Jewish families in the building were evicted. And that's something that is like very personal to me, and, you know, but as my father used to say, when life gives you lemons, you make lemonade. Unfortunately, with the help of my grandparents, they lent them money to buy a house, which turned out pretty well. But I introduce this resolution to have the Philadelphia Commission on Human Relations conduct a full review of this specific situation. Their input on this incident, how best to handle others like in the future, I think will be helpful for providing guidance to us and to event organizers and vendors. In order to ensure a safe and pleasant environment for all citizens of our community events, we have to develop recommendations for handling any situations like this exclusion of Moshava for future events. We must not and should not tolerate organizations or individuals who threaten our ability to celebrate our city's diversity or to maintain our position as inviting and welcoming place to live, work, and raise a family. So I encourage my colleagues to support this important action. Thank you for putting it on today's calendar. Thank you, Council President.
Point of information.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Member Dom, thank you for sharing that life event that you went through. Nothing will make you sensitive to discrimination like being discriminated against, but I would ask that you also have the individuals file with the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission as well to give another set of ayes, extra set of arms and legs to follow through on this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
As was said, that will be on today's final passage.
Councilwoman Gauthier offers two bills and one resolution, entitled an ordinance amending title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled zoning and planning by amending certain provisions of chapter 14, 500, entitled overlay zoning districts by creating the M I H Mixed Income Neighborhoods Overlay District by averaging certain provisions of chapter 14, 702, entitled floor area height and dwelling unit density bonuses and making related changes. And an ordinance to amend the master plans for the University of Pennsylvania by areas of land located within an area bounded by Guardian Drive, East Service Drive, Civic Center Boulevard, 34th Street, 33rd Street, Monarch Street, the Skoko River, 34th Street, and University Avenue. And a resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority deeds conveying fees simple titled to 4919 West Dorrit Avenue, 4931 West Dorrit Avenue, 4933 West Dorrit Avenue, 4935 West Dorrit Avenue, 4937 West Dorrit Avenue, 4943 West Dorrit Avenue, 4953 West Dorrit Avenue, 4955 West Dorrit Avenue, 4967 West Dorrit Avenue, 4983 West Dorrit Avenue, 4985 West Dorrit Avenue, 4989 West Dorrit Avenue, 4989 and a half West Dorrit Avenue, 4999 West Dorrit Avenue, 4991 and a half West Dorrit Avenue, 4993 and a half West Dorrit Avenue, 4995 West Dorrit Avenue, and 4997 and a half West Dorrit Avenue in the third councilmatic district of the City of Philadelphia.
That will be on next council session calendar.
Councilman Thomas offers two bills and two resolutions, entitled an ordinance amending title 12 of the Philadelphia Code and title Traffic Code to require the maintenance and reporting of certain information related to vehicle stops and making certain technical changes.
For the committee.
And an ordinance amending title 12 of the Philadelphia Code and fellow traffic code to clarify the appropriate methods and circumstances of enforcement of traffic violations in order to provide for the fair and transparent administration of the traffic violations, prevent racial disparities, and protect public safety and making certain technical changes. And a resolution calling for the Committee on Law and Government to hold hearings to examine the feasibility of offering election materials in additional languages, exploring ballot randomization, and enabling safer and more secure elections to adequately prepare for and participate in local, state, and federal elections.
This week's calendar.
And a resolution honoring and congratulating Champion of the Week Central High School Baseball and Softball Teams for their successful 2020 through 2021 season and winning their respective public league championship games.
Thank you. That will be on next session's calendar.
Councilman Squilla offers two bills and one resolution, entitled an ordinance amending title 14 of the Philadelphia Code and title Zoning and Planning by amending certain provisions of chapter 14, 800, entitled parking and loading pertaining to parking requirements for uses in historically designated properties.
For the committee.
And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by 11th Street, 12th Street, and Wharton Street, to amend title 14 of the Philadelphia Code by adding section 14, 531, entitled S M H South Philadelphia Municipal Hub Overlay District.
For the committee.
And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank deeds conveying title of the certain properties located in the first councilmatic district. Mr. President, Councilman Squilla would like to be recognized for a motion on this resolution.
Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Mr. President and Mr. Decker, was that for rule suspension?
Yes, it was, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of Councilmember Squilla, I request that the rules of council be suspended to permit immediate consideration on today's final passage calendar.
Sorry about that, guys, I couldn't.
There you go, Council, just for the record, you can go ahead.
I move the rules to be suspended to permit the consideration of this resolution on today's final passage calendar.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that will be on today's final passage calendar. Mr. Decker? You on mute?
I apologize to the body, Mr. President.
No problem.
Councilwoman Bass offers one bill, entitled an ordinance amending title 9 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Regulation of Businesses, Trades, and Professions by creating a new chapter 9, 5600, entitled Automotive Repair and Care Shop Parking, to regulate the parking operations of the automobile repair and care shops within the City of Philadelphia.
For the appropriate committee.
There are no other bills or resolutions being offered today by the members, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. That concludes the introduction of the rules and resolution by the members, and there are no reports from committee today, so we will move to our next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. There are no bills on the first meeting calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker for motion concerning the resolutions on the final passage calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the following resolutions on the final passage calendar today. They are resolution numbers 210587, 210590, 210591, 210592, 210593, 210594, 210595, 210596, 210597, 210598. 210-593, 210-594, 210-595, 210-596, 210-597, 210-598, 210-599, 210-600, 210-602, 210-604, 210-605, 210-606, 210-607, 210-608, 210-609, 210-610, 210-611, 210-612, 210-613, 210-614, 210-615, and 210-617.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the resolution just read by Councilwoman Parker. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries and we will consider the resolution considered in the short. Chair now recognizes Councilwoman Parker. More motion concerning the bills on the second reading and final passage calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the following bills on the second reading and final passage calendars today. They are numbers 210-482A, 210-508A, 210-329A, 210-361, 210-445, 210-446, 210-449, 210-467, 210-468, 210-469, 210-470, 210-471, 210-479, 210-480, 210-483, 200710, 200711, 200712, 210-280, 210-326, 210-327, 210-451, 210-472, 210-502, 210-504, 210-509, 210-443, and 210-500.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded the rules of council. Let the use of consent agenda to consider the bills just read by Councilwoman Parker. Aye.
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 Aye. Aye. Motion carries and we will consider the consent agenda shortly. Chair can recognize that it is Councilwoman Parker for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on the regular second reading and final passage calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. In addition to the resolutions and bills being considered on the consent agenda, the following resolutions and bills are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today. They are numbers 210-616, 210-421A, 210-330A, 210-325, 210-320, 210-321, 210-505, 200655, 210-322, 210-324, 210-473, 210-474, 210-484, and 210-503. All other bills and resolutions are being held, Mr. President.
Thank you. Uh, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Brooks.
Council President, I was saying before we go into the consent agenda, if you don't mind.
Oh, you want to, oh, okay. I thought you had.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Miami. Okay, before we can proceed with the consideration of public comment, uh, we will now move into take a brief five to 10-minute recess to give our technology professor an opportunity to connect with our speakers. We're going to get started on our public comment session. So now that everyone is connected to the meeting and before considering the resolution and bills we have before us today, we're going to start our public comment session. It will go as follows. Public comment must concern matters on the second reading and final passage calendars for possible action at assessment of counsel. A speaker on any of those matters must sign up in order to testify. You must call 215-686-3406 by 3:00 p.m. the day before the session to sign up for public comment. When you call, you will take your name, phone number, the number of the legislative item you are commenting on, and whether you are in support of or against the legislation. Add your name to the list. Uh, we will telephone each person on the list during the council session and invite them to our remote meeting. Um, we will have, because of the length of the, and the volume of individuals, um, we want to have two minutes today. Uh, so please adjust your testimony to reflect the two-minute timeline. In order to be fair to all those wishing to speak, though, I intend to hold faithfully to the established time limit. And once invited to the meeting and you're asked to begin your testimony, a timer will be started. We will monitor your remaining time throughout your testimony. And when there are 30 seconds remaining to your time, we will remind you of this. And once your allotted time has passed, you will be asked to conclude your remarks. And shortly thereafter, you'll be muted and disconnected from the remote meeting. Uh, also reserve the right to limit the number of speakers where repetitious comments are being made on the same subject matter and to limit the scope of testimony to only certain items on the agenda during the public health emergency, which could affect callbacks for public comment as needed. So please be aware that this public meeting is being recorded. And because the meeting is public, participants and viewers have no reasonable expectation of privacy. So by continuing to be in the meeting, you are consenting to being recorded. I will now ask the Chief clerk to please read the name of our first speaker.
First speaker today is Zach Fizik, commenting on 210-421.
Uh, good morning. Uh, state your name for the record. Please proceed with your testimony.
The Director of Government Affairs, uh, for the Pennsylvania Restaurant and Lodging Association. Uh, we represent about 347 members in Philadelphia and a total of about 2,736 members throughout the state. I'm here to comment on Councilmember Kenyatta Johnson's Bill Number 210-421, uh, which after the amendments adopted last week would mandate increased wages for employees at the Philadelphia International Airport for concessions and restaurants in January of 2022 and would require our operators to pay a health and wellness supplement to employees by July of '23. The impact of COVID, the COVID-19 pandemic has obviously devastated restaurants and many other businesses throughout the state and city of Philadelphia. This effect has arguably been the worst for our operators at the airport due to mitigation efforts that have significantly decreased travel. Uh, more than 80% of our operators tell us that their profit margin is is lower than before the coronavirus outbreak. While profits are obviously down, something that most do not consider is that costs are higher than ever due to backlog and complications in supply chain and manufacturing. Uh, the industry now faces new challenges like finding people to work. Travel obviously declined significantly during the pandemic. And while we have seen a spike this summer, we know, uh, according to the experts that have testified in front of this council, that corporate travel has an undeniably decreased and has remained stagnant. Uh, that can mean a lot more uncertainty and unpredictability for operators at the airport come fall and winter. That being said, the association appreciates Councilmember Johnson's effort uh, to work with us and with our members to address the concerns that they have with this legislation. Councilmember Johnson and this council took the time to speak with us, meet with us, and has undeniably answered dozens of our questions, uh, and questions from our members. Uh, while no piece of legislation is perfect, PRLA appreciates Councilman Johnson's consideration of how long it will take for the industry to recover. He made changes to the bill to allow time for commerce at the airport, uh, to return, and so that steps could be taken to increase crash flow for our operators. Um, Councilman Johnson's changes to the bill are important. Uh, and we hope to work with the city and the airport in the coming weeks uh, to address other issues like street pricing requirements and rents. Um, and, and we just, we want to thank council for your time and for your commitment to working with Philadelphia's business community.
Thank you. Thanks for your testimony. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Tiffany Green, commenting on 210-474.
Good morning. State your name for the record. Please proceed with your testimony.
Uh, good morning, Council. So I just want to speak on Bill 210-474. I believe this bill is a community killer. Uh, the developers trying to build 115 market rate apartments in our middle, our neighborhood. And he's using this hype bonus that you are giving out to developers, hype bonus of seven feet to make it into a buy right, which removes the community process. Okay, this is not fair to us. And everything, at this particular point, uh, the affordable housing is really deceitful, okay? You're only getting 10 or 20%. But yet, when you have these other, uh, bills and, and Council President, I really have to say you're saving your community, but you have denied point three since 2013. Why? Because in your neighborhood, you have, uh, buildings that's like 208 at 1314 North Broad Street units, 160, 355 units at Second and Spring Garden, uh, 23-story, 394 units. Okay, and all of these ones do pay in lieu. Councilwoman Sanchez, that is not a good idea. Of course, developers will pay because they get to keep their, uh, buildings exclusive, non-minority, and upscale. Okay, it needs to be a mandatory inclusionary zoning bill. And with the majority minority council, we should be able to get that. And it should be a community process. You should not give away a hype bonus that takes away the community process. That is not fair to us. And I just want to say at this particular point, that I hope that you would sit down with us and, and talk with us before you do that. This is going to hurt a lot of communities. And besides that, the 10% that you're giving or 20% affordable housing, what about the other 80% at $1,600 and up? That's going to increase area rents and push out a lot of people in this neighborhood. So we're saying to, I'm sorry, I'm saying to you that we're asking you to put this bill on hold and come back to the community and have a community meeting. Secondly, I'm asking you to insert the mask mandate. It's not fair for people to have to go to the supermarket and have people breathe on their food and not wear a mask. You have seniors that have pre-existing conditions and cannot get this vaccine. And you need to protect, the government's going to protect everybody, not just a few people who take on the vaccine. We have a choice. This is America and freedom of choice. If people cannot do that due to health issues, protect everybody with increasing, but putting back the indoor mask mandate so people will not be breathing on our food or when we go into stores, they'll be breathing on us. We have the right to be protected too.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Benjamin Shi, commenting on 210-474.
Hi, yes, this is Benjamin Shi. Um, speaking on the Mixed Income Housing Bonus Bill, 210-474. Um, this is my third time speaking on it. Uh, while we understand the policy imperative for the creation of affordable units within new development, our main concern about the changes to this program, uh, makes it seem that, um, the actual redevelopment, um, of properties, you know, for multifamily housing that can support mixed income use, uh, becomes more, less feasible, uh, with this bill. Um, if the projects are more, more economically unfeasible, then fewer residential units will be sold overall. Uh, we're considering, uh, that we need to maximize the number of units, um, of the low market, uh, for sure. Um, you know, the primary change to the program where, you know, uh, units under, projects with under 10 units would have to, you know, contribute a bigger burden, rather than projects above 10 units, uh, seems completely backwards to me still. Um, and council should really, uh, hold this bill and, uh, release an amendment, uh, trying to, that basically says that, you know, projects above a certain limit instead, uh, should be required to site onsite units, uh, because there's larger projects precisely, um, that have, uh, the much more profit margins available to developers, um, so that they can make their units, uh, more affordable. And besides, the actual unit count of these units are far more than would be, uh, than would be, uh, possible within, uh, 10, 10 or small unit buildings. So, uh, we still, um, while intention does need, still needs to get, make a revision including a deep and comprehensive economic analysis, um, from policy experts. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Benita Cummings, commenting on 210-322.
Good morning. State your name.
I do not have, uh, Mrs. Cummings yet. Uh, our next participant, Hillary Levine.
Good morning. State your name for the record. Proceed with your testimony.
Good morning. My name is Hillary Levine. I serve as Associate Director of American Jewish Committee's Regional Office in Philadelphia. Thank you for the opportunity to provide public comment today. Thank you to Councilman Dom for your leadership and for introducing this resolution that is so important to American Jewish Committee and the Jewish community at large. AJC looks forward to participating in the hearing, providing testimony in the future, and offering resources and support to ensure that an incident like this never happens in our city again. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in support of this resolution. With that, I yield the remainder of my time. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. We appreciate it.
Kate Esposito, commenting on 210-591.
Good morning.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, my name is Kate Esposito. I am here to testify in support of Resolution 210-591. I'm a member of Wage Local PA. An alliance including Power and Pennsylvania United focused on reversing the state preemptive power over municipalities' rights to set their own minimum wage. I want to thank Councilmember Parker for this resolution, which is in support of Representative Kevin Boyle's House Bill 923 and reflecting the will of the people as evidenced by the overwhelming passage of Question 3. Once again, the state legislature in all likelihood will not pass a raise in the minimum wage as part of the budget or in an independent bill before the end of the session. The $7.25 state minimum is a moral abomination and amounts to nothing more than legalized wage fest. The 283 tipped wage minimum is equally egregious. Paying a low wage that does not support someone's ability to sustain even a modicum of a decent standard of living is abhorrent, especially in this economy that taxes working and middle-class people while the rich and corporate elite enjoy obscene profits and wealth. I am confident the city would pass a $15 minimum wage bill in a Philly minute if we could. But the stranglehold of tyranny that Harrisburg holds over us and other municipalities prevents that. In this course of cities, we should have the right to lift our workers up out of poverty, especially those who had no choice but to work during the pandemic and most especially those black and brown workers who have been working for poverty wages for far too long. So I urge you to send this message to Harrisburg. I call upon all of you and the mayor to do everything you can to end this tyranny of the state so that we can become a more perfect Commonwealth defined as "the body politic organized for the general good." And a big shout out and thank you to Councilmember Gim and Power Faith Leaders for what they did yesterday on behalf of our children. Shame on Harrisburg yet again. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it.
Maya Stalling, commenting on 210-598.
Good morning. State your name for the record. Please proceed with your testimony.
Hi, my name is Maya Stalings. Um, and I'm testifying for, um, Dr. Sherrell Barber. Um, and so I just wanted to say that Dr. Sherrell Barber is an amazing woman. I've gotten the opportunity to know her in many different capacities in the last year. Before I arrived at Drexel University, I took practice research to professors at the School of Public Health, and I knew that she was someone that I had to meet because of the many research and professional achievements that are mentioned on this resolution. But most importantly, because she was a black epidemiologist doing exactly what I wanted to do as an epidemiologist, and I never knew a black epidemiologist before I met her. Through an email, I was able to connect with her and I was able to join her COVID-in-context team as a graduate assistant. I quickly learned that words do not do her justice as she is even more amazing when you meet her in person or because of the pandemic virtually. During my time at Drexel, I not only had Dr. Barber as my previous professor, but as academic professor and a mentor as well, who would even call if I was going through a rough time. So this resolution is so well-deserved because she is someone the community can count on to advocate for them. With the Bluetooth Center on Racism, Global Movement, and Population Equity... With a Bluetooth center on racism global movement and population equity, she will provide a home for all equity work in Philadelphia and will hopefully finally achieve her goal in getting the city of Philadelphia to declare racism as a public health issue. Congratulations again, Dr. Barber, and thank you for always showing up for us. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your testimony.
Dr. Shaleese Furman commenting on two one zero five nine three.
Good morning. State your name for the record. Please proceed with your testimony.
Good morning. My name is Dr. Shaleese Furman. I'm here to speak on resolution two one zero five nine three, um, which adds Vanita Cruz to the street signs on the sixty-three hundred block of Centon Avenue in recognition of her lifelong service to others and her advocacy in the optometry field. I'd like to thank Councilwoman Sherrell Parker for introducing this resolution. A life lived so full of service and dedication deserves a remembrance just as remarkable for many in the community, including myself. She was a mentor, a friend, and an inspiration. I grew up in the Oak Lane section of Philadelphia, and I'm pleased and humbled to continue to own a business and work there, all thanks to Ms. Vanita Cruz. Ms. Cruz was known around the city of Philadelphia not just as a penultimate professional, but as a community leader and activist. The Centon Avenue Business Corridor would not be the same had Ms. Cruz not been the president of the Centon Avenue Business Association, and the relationship she formed over the years with Philadelphia leadership, including Councilwoman Sherrell Parker, helped to organize and maintain the economic growth of the businesses of that area. Ms. Cruz was well-known in the optometry community as a pioneer, having been one of only a handful of women optician business owners and the first one in our section of Philadelphia. She carried with her a wealth of optical knowledge that unfortunately has gone with her. People would often come in and say, I was told there was a lady here that could fix these glasses that no one else could fix, and they would be right. When Ms. Cruz sold the business to me the very first week she walked with me to each and every neighborhood business to introduce me to all the other business owner, owners, that's just the kind of person she was. A mentor, not just to myself, but to all in the community. She would donate glasses, not just locally to those in need, but around the globe. Many in the community have said she helped raise them right there at the business of Centon Avenue and Johnson Street. Ms. Vanita Cruz continued to work at the business even after the exchange of ownership, not only as my mentor, but because, as she said, this is where I belong. Thank you, uh, very much to the city council, and her memory will live on with this dedication, as will the impact of her life and service. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you so much for your testimony. We appreciate it.
Josh Hicks commenting on two one zero five nine zero.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm, um, commenting on, uh, resolution twenty-one ten five ninety, which adds Tyrone, Gary Tyrone Clayton to the fifty-six hundred block of North Tenth Street in recognition of his outstanding achievements and accomplishments with the Together Brothers Boxing Club. And I'd like to thank, uh, Councilwoman Sherrell Parker for, even after forty-one years, remembering, remembering this, and, uh, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. This, sir, this, for you, for the record, please state your name for the record.
Joshua Hicks.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you for your testimony.
The next speaker is Leonard Clayton commenting on two one zero five nine zero.
Morning. Uh, state your name for the record, and please proceed with your testimony.
Good morning. My name is Leonard Clayton, and I am here to speak on resolution two one zero five nine zero, which adds Gary Tyrone Clayton, my brother, to the street signs on the fifty-six hundred block of North Tenth Street in recognition of his contributions to young men in the Islande community and across Philadelphia through the Together Brothers Boxing Club. I would like to thank Councilwoman Sherrell Parker for introducing this resolution. Thank you, Ms. Parker. I would also like to thank everyone that was involved in making this happen, especially Mr. Josh Hicks. My brother Tyrone not only represented the great city of Philadelphia, but he represented our country by being on the U.S. boxing team, which was en route to Warsaw Poland, March fourteenth, nineteen eighty, when the tragedy of a plane crash happened. My family and I want to, everyone to know, we are grateful and humbled by this experience today. So once again, thank you, City of Philadelphia, City Council, and to everyone who made this happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your testimony. Appreciate it.
The next speaker is Benita Cummings commenting on two one zero three two two.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Good morning, Council President and councilmembers. Uh, my name is Benita Cummings, and I'm commenting on the budget. I have a rating budget three one zero, two one zero three two two. It is difficult to speak in a few seconds comprehensively, but I will do my best. Two points I want to make is one, decimation of African-American inheritance wealth, and two, abuse of nonprofits. Neighborhood preservation practices and programs and resources like the Housing Trust Fund, the Land Bank, LNI, NTI, all the banks, tax credits, planning and zoning, et cetera, have primarily benefited white men and women and other non-African-Americans. These practices appear to be a resolution, but they were brought to the council body by the usual suspects and have been the progenitor of the decimation of African-American inheritance wealth due to the taking of their land and property. There's been major irrevocable harm creating generational poverty of inheritance wealth for years to come for African-American families in Philadelphia. African-Americans lose their land and properties, and if all was fair, they would have been given the same support to be the developers of their properties instead of, instead they lose everything. Words make it to paper, but they don't necessarily have the action needed to ensure the quality, the equality, and share the wealth that your laws, plans, ideas, or budgets speak about. So please know that this continued unaccountable path will leave African-Americans behind, and what our children will witness is continued inequality, no inheritance wealth, and poverty, no matter how educated they are. What's more affordable than what you already own? So as you consider passing your budget for affordable or low-income housing or neighborhood preservation projects, please consider that one person harmed by losing their inheritance wealth is paramount to a lynching, which we all should know the history of how African, African-Americans suffer. More accountability is needed for nonprofits. They are swelling the budget of government with conditions that are not improving. Many have no neighborhood, block-by-block plans with the residents. They receive millions of public dollars. Not many common residents are, are on their boards, et cetera, and many have committed egregious acts in neighborhoods. Some things do have a destination. Uh, we need more accountability. I would hope to be able to continue more comprehensively to dialogue with the city council regarding these concerns, and thank you for allowing me to have a voice today.
Thanks for your testimony. Share, recognize, Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to request leave of absence for the rest of the meeting to attend council business and be recorded as voting aye on all bills and resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman Dee Shelby-Grannit. Uh, you will be recorded as voting aye on all bills and resolutions today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Decker.
Yes, Mr. President. The next speaker is Cecil Hankins commenting on two one zero five nine two.
Good morning. Uh, state your name for the record. Please proceed with your testimony.
Uh, good morning, and my name is Cecil A. Hankins, senior. I'm here to speak on resolution at number twenty-one oh five nine two, which adds Marion Johnson to the street signs of the block intersection of Eighth and Duncan Street to Eighth and Ninth and Duncan Street, in recognition of her public service in the Ninth Councilmatic District and to the city of Philadelphia, as well as her dedication to ensuring her support and success of Barrett Playground, now Recreation Center. I would like to thank Councilwoman Sherrell Parker for introducing this resolution. For Ms. Marion Johnson has been the G O A T of Logan for over forty-four years, greatest of all times. To many of us residing in Logan, she is officially known as the mayor of Logan because our quality life issues often fall to her to resolve. I first, I first met Ms. Johnson on an early Saturday morning during the summer of nineteen eighty-six. At that time, I noticed her painting the wall of Barrett Playground Building. She was alone and did not make a fuss about going about the business or making the playground presentable so our children could have a clean, safe place to play. Her action that day also inspired me to get busy about the business of community activism. Included in her many accomplishments to Logan residents are her co-chairing the naming committee to name third-go Marshall Elementary School, the co-chair of the Logan Island Coalition, a member of the Barrett Recreation Center's Advisory Council, and recently, a key force in the rebuilding of the Barrett Recreation Center. There are many other accomplishments, but my time is running out, so I could be here all morning talking about what Ms. Johnson has done for us. So God bless you all, and I thank each of you for allowing me the opportunity to give testimony to renaming the streets between Eighth and Duncan, to Ninth and Duncan, to Marion Johnson Way, and thank you, my city councilperson, Sherrell Parker.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you for your testimony. Appreciate it.
The next speaker is Sonia Songhai commenting on two one zero five nine three.
Good morning. Uh, state your name for the record. Please proceed with your testimony.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Sonia Songhai. I am here to speak on resolution two one zero five nine three, which adds Vanita Cruz to the street signs on the seventy-three hundred block of Centon Avenue in recognition of her lifelong service to others and her advocacy in the optometry field. I would like to thank Councilwoman Sherrell Parker for introducing this resolution. Thank you for the invitation to speak about the life and legacy of Vanita Cruz. Vanita Cruz was an African-American businesswoman who was able to bring into focus our collective eyesight through her many functional yet fashionable lenses, blinkers, spectacles, shades, bifocals, and opera glasses. If you did not see it in her store, Vanita Cruz would research worldwide to find what you her valued customer wanted. Her service to the community was seamless and professional from beginning to the end. Vanita Cruz was dependable and always kept her word. We are excited and looking forward to seeing Vanita Cruz's name added to the street signage. Her legacy lives on through her daughters, Akia and family. Again, I say thank you. I yield back to the President of Council.
Thank you for your testimony. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Tony Johnson commenting on five nine two.
My name is Tony Johnson, and I am here to speak on resolution two one zero five nine two, which adds Marion Johnson to the street signs on the block intersection of Eighth and Duncan Streets to Ninth and Duncan Streets in recognition, excuse me, of her public service in the Ninth Councilmatic District and to the city of Philadelphia, as well as her dedication ensuring the support and success of Barrett Playground, now Recreation Center. I would like to thank Councilwoman Sherrell Parker for introducing this resolution. My parents, Rudolph and Marion Johnson, five daughters, me, Debbie, Patsy, Brenda, Linda, and grandmother, Helly White, moved to the Logan community in nineteen seventy-one. Upon settling in our new home and community, it was not long before my mother became acquainted with the neighbors and began her journey to work for the betterment of the neighborhood. Between being our mother, job, family business, and church, she unselfishly took on the issue of the community to ensure that we had a decent environment to grow and prosper. Her tireless sacrifice to a biological family and her community families is what drives each of her family members today to assist others in need. Since I was given two minutes to speak, I end by saying, on behalf of our family, I am honored with the privilege of thanking each of you for considering naming the intersection of Eighth and Duncan, the Ninth and Duncan Streets to Marion Johnson Way. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. We appreciate it.
Michael Taub commenting on two one zero three two nine and two one zero three three zero.
Good morning. Uh, state your name for the record. Please proceed.
Uh, yes, my name is Michael Taub, and I'm an attorney at the Homeless Advocacy Project. Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to testify. I'm calling to express our support for the Renters Access Act, and I'm calling on behalf of our clients, those living in homeless shelters or on the street who don't need to be living in shelter or on the street, and who this bill will help. Many of these folks even have vouchers but still can't find a place to live. Why would that be? Because at some point in time, a landlord filed for eviction against them, and so now when they apply for housing, even with a voucher, their applications are routinely denied. In fact, I'm working with a client right now, a vet who lives at the vet's shelter on Seventeenth Street. He has the money to pay for a security deposit. He has a voucher, but he can't find a place. Just last week, he found a place he loved, and the landlord said no after looking at his eviction record. There was only one filing against him. A default judgment entered while he was at the VA Hospital in Coatesville. He'd be a great tenant today, but he was denied solely for that reason. This bill will help him and others just like him move out of shelter and into a place of their own. Please pass this bill on their behalf. Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
Daniel Hyman commenting on two one zero three two nine and two one zero three three zero.
Good morning. State your name for the record, and please proceed with your testimony.
Good morning. This is Dan. Um, thank you for the opportunity. I'm a staff attorney at Senior Law Center. At Senior Law Center, we protect the rights of Pennsylvanians. We're the only nonprofit organization that has any dedication providing legal protection to seniors.
Um, Ms. Hyman? Simon?
Yes.
Um, we're having extreme difficulty hearing what you're saying. Um, let's see, um, is there a way, maybe we can have him, uh, call him back or have him call back so he can get a better connection?
Uh, yes, we can, Council President.
Let's try, let's, let us try to reconnect you, Ms. Hyman, so we can hear your testimony.
Thank you.
Well.
The next speaker, Mr. President?
Yes.
The next speaker is Deborah Gary commenting on two one zero four seven three.
Good morning. Uh, please state your name for the record. Proceed with your testimony. Gary.
Sir Decker, we don't have Ms. Laura in. We would need to go to the next participant.
Devin Bessick commenting on two one zero six zero five.
Good morning. Uh, state your name for the record. Please proceed with your testimony.
About resolution two ten sixty-five zero, uh, five hundred, um, every obstacle is opportunity. When life gives you lemons, make lemonade. Look on the bright side. Sure, optimism is cool, but have you, how do you expect me to be optimistic after losing four years of my life to a system that bailed me? I sat there in the dim basement room with a assortment of chairs placed on the semi-colored carpet of the PA Municipal Court Room. I sat in one of the green chairs because I was hoping green would give me more luck than I experienced in the last year. Out of a hundred and sixty-nine charges ranging from felonies in the first degree to misdemeanors in the third that were filed against me for a crime, I was coerced into participating in through my abusive ex-boyfriend at the time. That one misdemeanor set my family back another two hundred years. I graduated college. I'm a first-generation college student. I got a good job in finance. I saved my money, invested my money, got a nice apartment, volunteered in my community, fed the homeless. I even saved babies from burning homes. I did everything right. You would think we would have a judicial system that would have domestic violence advocates in that courtroom petitioning during my sentencing. I mean, I am a first-time offender, receiving the same punishment as a repeated offender already on probation for the same crime we were in court for. So I lost my job, my invested money, my nice So I lost my job, my invested money, my nice apartment, and my respect in my community. Perfect. You sprinkle a little court and probation fees, $48,000 in college debt, you mix in the inability to get a stable job, and you have poverty pie. African-Americans are five times more likely to be incarcerated than whites, so I'm calling you out. I'm calling out all white men who control the laws, the narrative, and the fate of black people to check your privilege. Our judicial system is a part of the bigger ploy to keep white men wealthy and black people impoverished, because turning the cheap makes you a part of the problem. Sorry, not sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much for your testimony, we appreciate it.
Catherine Hoy, commenting on 210-605.
Good morning, state your name for the record, please proceed with your testimony. Good morning, Ms. Hoy.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead now, state your name for the record, and proceed with your testimony, please.
Sure, uh, my name is Catherine Hoy, I'm here to support Resolution 10, or 210-60500. Um, thank you, Councilmember Brooks, for inviting me to testify today and for your time the other day during our Change Narrative Fellowship. Um, listening to your story was inspiring and empowering, and I really appreciate the time that you spent with us. Uh, the collective strength of women is inspiring and a transformative asset. When women come together, powerful ideas become realities, binaries begin to reshape and boundaries are pushed. I just would like to say at this point that women like me who have faced economic hardships, who have faced domestic violence or health issues, we deserve an opportunity to have a seat at the table. Our, our lived experiences are an asset to any organization, and I just feel like the more you give women like me an opportunity, the better that we can all grow together and, and really enact the change that's needed. I appreciate the time to speak, and again, Councilmember Brooks, I really appreciated your time.
Thank you for your testimony, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Sir Decker, you're on mute.
Marilyn Robinson, commenting on 210-421A.
Hi, my name is Marilyn Robinson, and I'm a security guard at the International Airport. I'm here to speak on Bill 210421. I worked at the International Airport for 14 years, and at this point, all I'm making is 13 cents. So it is so important that City Council take into consideration that there are hundreds of us that are making this wage that is not even minimum wage at this point. Please consider the prevailing wage, and thank you for the opportunity to testify. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Daniel Hyman, commenting on 210-329 and 210-330.
Good morning, thank you for the opportunity to speak, I hope I'm clearer now. Uh, my name is Daniel, I'm a staff attorney at Senior Law Center. We're the only nonprofit organization providing protection to senior citizens, including elders facing homelessness. Are you able to hear me?
It's just, it's, it's, it's not, it's just not a good connection, Ms. Hyman.
Okay, I apologize.
All right.
All right, well, I, I can try submitting my testimony.
You were better now.
Okay, um, so I, I'm a staff attorney at Senior Law Center. Um, our clients are uniformly cold, they find it extremely difficult to search for houses. In addition to barriers facing low income, yes, sir?
Yeah, it's just that we're not, you're garbled, uh, we're not hearing it, um, we want to hear you. Can you forward your testimony, and we can make sure it's a matter of record?
Absolutely, I can do so.
Yeah, this Senate will make sure that it's a part of our record for today's public comment section.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
The next speaker is Charles Patton, commenting on 210-421A.
Good morning, state your name for the record, please proceed with your testimony.
Good morning, my name is Charles Patton, and I'm a cook at the Philadelphia International Airport at Bar Simon. I've worked for PCE at the airport for about eight years. PCE is a food service company that has multiple concession stands at the airport. I've worked in the food service industry for 21 years. Some of the other places I've worked include Chick-fil-A at the airport and Boston Market around, around 13 years. Being in the industry for so long, I can tell you that our healthcare, we need better healthcare. When I was at Boston Market, I had healthcare, and it was good. During that time, I had an outpatient surgery, and my healthcare coverage had left me with a bill of over $2,000. On top of that, my premium was already high. My bills were piling up, and I needed a second job. I got hired at Chick-fil-A, my very first job, at the airport in 2007, and to my surprise, the company didn't offer any insurance at that location. My mother's health started to decline in 2009, and even more bills and stress began to pile up. I left Boston Market and picked up a second job, which was PCE at the airport. At that time, PCE did have insurance, but I couldn't afford it. The premium was too high, the deductible was $5,000, there was no way in the world I was going to be able to afford that. Now, because of my union, I have options for, better options for healthcare. I currently have coverage with PCE, but it could still be better. I've spent over 20 years looking for decent coverage at work, but to be honest, my coworkers and I at the airport deserve free healthcare. We have faced and continue to face all kinds of safety issues due to the pandemic. Some of my workers, coworkers have gotten COVID-19 over, and our health matters. If I was receiving free medical care, I could save more money, and I wouldn't experience so much financial burden. I have coworkers who have to decide between their medical care and paying their rent. People shouldn't have to choose between these basic human necessities, and these decisions are being made at the airport every day. So please, City Council, pass this bill. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony, we appreciate it.
Tiana Richardson, commenting on 210-421A.
Good morning, state your name for the record, please proceed with your testimony.
Good morning, my name is Tiana Richardson. I am a security guard employed by ALA University at the Philadelphia International Airport. I'm here speaking on Bill 210-421. I am asking that the City Council pass the prevailing wage expansion. This bill helps low-income working families with healthcare, healthcare and financial issues faced on the deli. As we know, health insurance is expensive, and we should be able to take care of our families. I'm sorry, we should be able to take care of our health to continue to work with no issues. I recently caught COVID, and had to choose healthcare over, over providing food for my family. If we were to receive this raise, we could provide for our families and make ends meet to live our everyday lives, as taking care of our health and family is very important. Thank you for allowing me to speak on the behalf of the people fighting to pass this
Thank you for your testimony, we appreciate it.
Nathaniel Sokan, commenting on 210-421A.
Morning, state your name for the record, please proceed with your testimony.
My name is Nathaniel Sokan, thank you. Uh, I work with Skyshare, I've been working with Skyshare for the past seven years. We cater to the airline. The healthcare offered by the company is very expensive, which I cannot, and like my other coworkers, who are not also of, able, can't afford the insurance. We struggle with the healthcare because we have no, we have health conditions. Sometimes, I go a month without paying my rent and all of that because of the healthcare coverage. I pray, I pay over $400 a month for my insurance, and my staff, we, we, we got to do something about this, about this. A lot of my coworkers can, cannot afford the insurance because they, because of the cost. We made, we made billions of dollars for the company, and why are we treated, why are we treated this way? I therefore, on behalf of my colleagues, of the airline workers, hereby appeal to you to please pass this bill in the best interest of the workers and our family. Again, I want to say thank you for the opportunity afforded me to testify before you dish honorable body. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much for your testimony, we appreciate it.
Brian Eckler, commenting on 210-421A.
Good morning, uh, state your name for the record, please proceed with your testimony. Is that so?
Did you say Brian Eckler?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I couldn't really understand you. Yes, this is Brian Eckler, um, security officer at American Airlines, um, in an airport in Philadelphia. I'm speaking on Bill 210-421.
Go ahead.
Yes, um, I'm speaking, um, for the 15, for minimum wage, $15 an hour, like, I feel like we all deserve it. We, we're out here during a pandemic, um, securing a building with over $100 million worth of merchandise, airplanes, and for us to sit here and get paid less than minimum wage is crazy. And also, I'm a diabetic, and type 2 diabetic, and I have to come out of my pocket every other month to pay for my medicine. Like, I gotta choose between my medicine and my health, or paying bills, going food shopping, or anything like that. I shouldn't have to do that, and I feel like if we get this bill passed for the minimum wage and health insurance, that will help me a whole lot and help all of us down here a whole lot. Um, I appreciate you for letting me speak, and can we please pass this bill?
Thank you, thank you for your testimony, we appreciate it.
Joseph Lamond's, commenting on 210-421A.
We couldn't connect with, uh, Mr. Joseph, uh, Mr. Decker.
Dwayne Royster, commenting on 210-421A.
Morning, I'll state your name for the record, please proceed with your testimony.
Good morning, my name is Bishop Dwayne Royster. I am the Executive Director of Power Interface, the state of Pennsylvania's largest faith-based organizing movement across the city of Philadelphia and beyond. Mr. President, members of the Philadelphia City Council, and especially Councilmember Kenyatta Johnson, who's the primary sponsor of Bill 210-421A, the prevailing wage expansion. The frontline workers at the Philadelphia Airport who served American Airlines and other carriers during the pandemic, whose hands built this industry's recovery, need a recovery plan too. The majority of workers are African-American immigrant workers who live in Philadelphia's working class and working poor neighborhoods. They faced disproportionate hardship during the pandemic. Hundreds of these workers at the airport lost their jobs. Those who continue working risk the grave exposure to COVID-19, and the overwhelming majority of them who worked without, they worked without private health insurance since the plans offered were too expensive for these low-wage workers to afford. These same workers now have gone over a year without a raise. The era of corporate profit built on the poverty wages of essential black, brown, and immigrant workers at our nation's airports must end. The ravages of the pandemic reveal the human cost of failing to protect the welfare of our country's essential workers. The raises contemplated in this bill are step, are in step with policies enacted by airports across the country. While Americans receive billions in bailout money with more on the way, only action of the Philadelphia City Council can secure a future for workers and their families at the airport. We urge all of Council to join us in not delaying in passing this bill and ensuring that airport workers who endured the worst of the pandemic share in the airline's recoveries. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your testimony, we appreciate it.
Mr. President, it appears, it appears as if there are no other speakers in the public comment list.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. That concludes our public comments for today. Um, prior to us moving to the consideration of today's Resolution Consent Agenda, I would like to recognize Councilwoman Brooks.
Thank you so much, Council President. I want to make a brief comment about one of the resolutions included, or the Consent Agenda Resolution 210-605, um, the Women's Way Narrative Fellowship Program. It empowers women who have struggled against economic insecurity, um, to own and share their stories and act as change agents for others. I was lucky enough to attend their graduation, um, and to hear from each and every one of them about the barriers they have struggled against and overcome, and, um, just each of their stories have reminded, uh, me of why I do this work and who I do it for. So I wanted to commend, um, Women's Way for their work in this area and to thank them for advocating for what I deeply believe in, which is, um, those who are most directly impacted by structural, structural oppression, um, and they should be leading the way towards, um, collective liberation. So thank you guys so much, and that concludes my comments, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We will now, uh, consider, uh, today's Resolution Consent Agenda, and I would ask Mr. Decker to please read the titles of all Resolutions on the Consent Agenda. After each title is read, any member may object to the inclusion of a Resolution on the Resolution Consent Agenda. Upon such an objection, without debate, the Resolution will be immediately removed from the Resolution Consent Agenda and placed on today's regular file passes, Councilman. Um, Mr. Decker, please read the titles of the Resolutions now on the Consent Agenda.
Resolution number 210-587, entitled the Resolution Reappointing Lynette Brown Sode to the Board of Directors of the Philadelphia Municipal Authority. Resolution number 210-590, entitled the Resolution Adding Gary Tyron Clayton to the street signs on the 5600 block of North 10th Street in recognition of his contributions to young men in the Alany Community and across Philadelphia, so the Together Brothers Boxing Club. And Resolution number 210-591, entitled the Resolution Urging the Pennsylvania General Assembly to Adopt House Bill 923, which would allow for Philadelphia and municipalities throughout Pennsylvania to enact their own living wage legislation. And Resolution number 210-592, entitled the Resolution Adding Marion Johnson to the street signs on the block intersections of Eighth and Duncanin Streets to Ninth and Duncanin Streets in recognition of her public service in the Ninth Council-Matic District and to the City of Philadelphia, as well as her dedication to ensuring the support and success of Barrett Playground. And Resolution number 210-593, entitled the Resolution Adding Vanita Cruz to the street signs on the 700, 7300 block of Stanton Avenue in recognition of her lifelong service to others and her advocacy in the optometry field. And Resolution number 210-594, entitled the Resolution Improving the Redevelopment Contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the model city's urban renewal area identified by house numbers and street addresses as 1807 through 1833 North Eighth Street, 1837 through 1861 North Eighth Street, 720 through 730 West Burke Street, including 1838 through 1842 North Franklin Street, 1826 North Franklin Street, and 1832 North Franklin Street. And Resolution number 210-595, entitled the Resolution Authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to Dispose of 3252 Germantown Avenue located in the Fifth Council-Matic District. And Resolution number 210-596, entitled the Resolution Authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to Execute and Deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority. These conveying fees will title a certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on situated in the situated in the Fifth Councilmatic District. And resolution number two one zero five nine seven entitled the resolution recognizing and honoring Omar Tate for his efforts to address food insecurity, elevate black food and culture, and to create a safe community space through his work to open the Honeysuckle Community Center. And resolution number two one zero five nine eight entitled the resolution honoring and congratulating Dr. Shirelle Barber for her appointment as Director of the Ubuntu Center on Racism, Local Movements, and Population Health Equity at Jackson University. And, and resolution number two one zero five nine nine entitled the resolution supporting the city, the, the school district of Philadelphia's efforts to ensure all schools are safe havens for immigrant families by protecting students' learning environments from disruption by immigrant enforcement actions and by safeguarding students' confidential information and endorsing the, the district's proposed welcoming sanctuary schools resolution. And resolution number two one zero six zero zero entitled the resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority. These conveying, conveying fees simple titled two, fifty-four thirty-six West Stewart Road Avenue, six sixty-two North Conestoga Street, six fifty-eight North Conestoga Street, six fifty North Conestoga, Conestoga Street, six fifty-three North Sickel Street, six forty-four North Sickel Street, six forty-two North Sickel Street, six fifty-five North Fifty-Fifth Street, six fifty-three North Fifty-Fifth Street, six fifty-one North Fifty-Fifth Street, six forty-nine North Fifty-Fifth Street, six forty-seven North Fifty-Fifth Street, six forty-five North Fifty-Fifth Street, six forty-three North Fifty-Fifth Street, six forty-one North Fifty-Fifth Street, six twenty-three through, through six thirty-three North Fifty-Fifth Street, five forty-three North Conestoga Street, five forty-one North Conestoga Street, five thirty-three North Conestoga Street, five fifty North Fifty-Fourth Street, five forty-six North Fifty-Fourth Street, five thirty-eight through five forty North Fifty-Fourth Street, five thirty-four through five thirty-six North Fifty-Fourth Street, fifty-five fifty-two Homer Street in the Fourth Councilmatic District of the City of Philadelphia. And resolution number two one zero six zero two entitled the resolution approving the reappointment of Abby Pozepski to the Philadelphia Water, Sewer, and Stormwater Board. And resolution number two one zero six zero four entitled the resolution recognizing the month of June as Immigrant Heritage Month and Caribbean American Heritage Month in the City of Philadelphia. And resolution number two one zero six zero five entitled the resolution honoring the inaugural graduating class of eight fellows of Women's Way Change the Narrative Fellowship Program, an initiative of the Women's Economic Security Initiative. And resolution number two one zero six zero six entitled the resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank. These conveying titled to certain properties located in the Third Councilmatic District. And resolution number two one zero six zero seven entitled the resolution approving the ratification and fourth amendment to the redevelopment agreement of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the University City, Unit Five Urban Manure Area identified as parcel number fourteen. And resolution number two one zero six zero eight entitled the resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the Mantua Urban Manure Area identified by house numbers and street addresses as thirty-seven hundred through thirty-seven oh four Brown Street, including thirty-seven oh eight through thirty-seven twelve Brown Street, seven forty-nine through seven fifty-seven North Tecob Street, and seven seventy-two through seven eighty North Thirty-Seven Street, thirty-seven oh six Brown Street, and thirty-seven fourteen Brown Street. And resolution number two one zero six oh nine entitled a resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the Sarah Allen Urban Manure Area, area identified by house number and street address as eight sixty-four through eight seventy-four North Preston Street and eight seventy-one through eight seventy-three Bud Street. And resolution number two one zero six one zero entitled the resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of forty-nine seventy-four Kershaw Street, forty-nine seventy-eight Kershaw Street, forty-nine eighty Kershaw Street, forty-two twenty-two Calhoun Avenue, and thirty-three, thirty-eight oh three Paramount Avenue located in the Third Councilmatic District. And resolution number two one zero six one one entitled the resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the West Mill Creek Urban Manure Area identified by house number and street address as nine twenty through nine thirty-six North Fifty-first Street. And resolution number two one zero six one two entitled the resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of six-ten South Fifty-fourth Street and fifty-four-ten Spur Street located in the Third Councilmatic District. And resolution number two one zero six one three entitled the resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority. These conveying fees simple titled two, seven twenty-three North Shedwick Street, seven thirteen North Thirty-Fifth Street, thirty-four oh eight Mantua Avenue, thirty-four-ten Mantua Avenue, and thirty-five eighteen Wallace Street in the Third Councilmatic District. And resolution number two one zero six one four entitled a resolution honoring and congratulating Champion of the Week, Tracy Carter, for creating the Youth Deputy Violence Program and Chris Camp after losing his brother to gun violence. And resolution number two one zero six fifteen entitled a resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority. These conveying fees simple titled to twenty forty-eight Fletcher Street, twenty-six forty-six Ritter Street, twenty-six fifty-eight Ritter Street, twenty-six thirty-seven Janey Street, twenty-six thirty-nine Janey Street, twenty-six forty-three Janey Street, twenty-six forty-five Janey Street, and twenty-six forty-nine Janey Street in the First Councilmatic District. And resolution number two one zero six one seven entitled a resolution honoring and congratulating Im Ja Choi, founder and CEO of Penn Agent Senior Services, for her steadfast service to the local agent and our community on the occasion of her retirement.
Mr. Decker?
Yes, Mr. President?
Um, yeah, you were on mute. You popped on mute shortly.
I was on mute, mute, mute when I read those resolutions, Mr. President?
Just the last part. I didn't know if you got them on. There's an issue with the syncing of, uh, your, your visual and the reading of that. But anyways, we, we have the list. Um, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker for motion to adopt each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda.
Second.
Second, as we moved and seconded that each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda be adopted, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who vote ayes have it, and each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda has been adopted. We now consider today's bill consent agenda. And I will ask Mr. Decker for please read the titles of all the bills on the consent agenda. After each title is read, any member may object to the inclusion of the bill on the consent agenda. Upon such an objection, without debate, the bill will immediately be removed from the consent agenda and placed on a regular and second final passes calendar. Mr. Decker, please read the titles of the bills on the consent agenda.
Bill number two one zero four eight two entitled an ordinance demanding chapter fourteen five hundred of the Philadelphia, Philadelphia zoning code entitled overlay zoning districts by creating a new section entitled HHC, Helport Hazard Control Overlay District. And bill number two one zero five zero eight entitled an ordinance authorizing the city treasurer on behalf of the city to enter into a provider agreement with Citizens Bank of Pennsylvania for provision of payroll banking services to the city. And bill number two one zero three two nine entitled an ordinance demanding chapter nine eleven hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Fair Practices Ordinance, Protections Against Unlawful Discrimination, requiring the use and disclosure of uniform screening criteria for rental housing and certain related disclosures to prospective rental housing applicants. And to provide that the failure to provide such disclosures may be evidence of unlawful housing and real property practices. And bill number two one zero three six one entitled an ordinance demanding title fourteen of the Philadelphia Code entitled zoning and planning to revise certain provisions of section fourteen five oh four entitled NCO Neighborhood Conservation Overlay District. And bill number two one zero four four five entitled an ordinance demanding title fourteen of the Philadelphia Code by revising and consolidating provisions of chapter fourteen five hundred entitled overlay zoning districts by amending section fourteen five twenty-four entitled FDO Fourth District Overlay District and section fourteen five twenty-seven entitled WYN Winfield District Overlay District. And bill number two one zero four four six entitled an ordinance demanding title fourteen of the Philadelphia Code to revise certain provisions of chapter fourteen six hundred entitled Use Regulations by amending use standards for historically designated properties and making related changes. Bill number two one zero four four nine entitled an ordinance amending title fourteen of the Philadelphia Code entitled zoning and planning by revising a table within section fourteen seven oh one, Dimensional Standards. And bill number two one zero four six seven entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Cecil B. Moore Avenue, Twentieth Street, Oxford Street, and Twenty-first Street. And bill number two one zero four six eight entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Thompson Street Extended, Sixth Street, Gerard Avenue, Percy Street, Harper Street, and Thirteenth Street, and to amend title fourteen of the Philadelphia Code by revising certain provisions of chapter fourteen five hundred entitled overlay zoning districts by creating the GAO Gerard Avenue Overlay District. Bill number two one zero four six nine entitled an ordinance demanding title fourteen of the Philadelphia Code entitled zoning and planning to revise certain provisions of chapter fourteen five hundred entitled overlay zoning districts by amending the NCP North Central Philadelphia Overlay District. Bill number two one zero four seven zero entitled an ordinance demanding chapter fourteen nine hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Signs by providing for new sign controls entitled nineteen hundred Market Street Digital Display Sign Regulations. Bill number two one zero four seven one entitled an ordinance authorizing non-accessory parking on the premises located at forty-four twenty-two through twenty-four Ridge Avenue. And bill number two one zero four seven nine entitled an ordinance to amend the master plan for the University of Pennsylvania by areas of land located within an area bounded by Chestnut Street, Thirty-third Street, Ledler Street, and Thirty-fourth Street. And bill number two one zero four eight zero entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Civic Center Boulevard, University Avenue, Spur Street, and Thirty-fourth Street. And bill number two one zero four eight three entitled an ordinance demanding the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Allegheny Avenue, Collins Street, Westmoreland Street, and Tulip Street. And bill number two zero zero seven one zero entitled an ordinance demanding chapter twelve twenty-seven hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled permit parking districts by amending the boundaries for certain permit parking districts and by establishing a new permit parking district. And bill number two zero zero seven one one entitled an ordinance demanding section twelve twenty-seven oh five of the Philadelphia Code entitled issuance of resident parking permits to address the rules regarding issuance of resident park, park, parking permits. And bill number two zero zero seven one two entitled an ordinance demanding section twelve twenty-seven oh five of the Philadelphia Code entitled issuance of resident parking permits to address the cost of resident parking permits for so, certain low-income individuals. And bill number two one zero two eight zero entitled an ordinance authorizing the procurement commissioner to enter into a contract for the construction of sewer and apartment work required to provide public sewer service in the sixteen-hundred block of Olive Street. And bill number two one zero three two six entitled an ordinance establishing no truck parking and tollway zone regulations on both sides of Sackett Street from Cotton Avenue to Ryan Avenue. And bill number two one zero three two seven entitled an ordinance establishing no truck parking and tollway zone regulations on both sides of St. Vincent Street from Sackett Street to Hawthorne Street. And bill number two one zero four five one entitled an ordinance demanding chapter ten seven hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled refuse and littering by amending section ten seven nineteen entitled penalties by revising the penalty to be assessed for violations of this chapter. And bill number two one zero four seven two entitled an ordinance demanding chapter twelve twenty-seven hundred of the, of the Philadelphia Code entitled permit parking districts by amending the boundaries of permit parking district sixteen. And bill number two one zero five zero two entitled an ordinance demanding section twelve seven oh one of the Philadelphia Code entitled designation of bicycle lanes to authorize a bicycle lane on North Thirteenth Street from Spring Garden Street to Green Street. And bill number two one zero five zero four entitled an order to authorize the revision of lines of grades on a portion of city plan number one sixty-seven within the area bounded by Sixty-seventh Street, Vine Street, Sixty-ninth Street, and Haverford Avenue by striking portions of certain streets from the city plan, vacating portions of certain streets from the city plan, and reserving the placing on, on the city plan multiple rights of way for gas main purposes and public utility purposes. And bill number two one zero five zero nine entitled an ordinance demanding title twelve of the Philadelphia Code entitled Traffic Code by creating a new chapter twelve thirty-five hundred entitled Personal Delivery Devices to regulate the operation of personal delivery devices within the City of Philadelphia in cer, certain circumstances. And bill number two one zero four four three entitled an ordinance amending chapter nine of the Philadelphia Code entitled Regulation of Businesses, Trades, and Professions by adding a new chapter relating to, related to hiring entities providing covered individuals with a workforce and career pathways information sheet. And bill number two one zero five zero zero entitled an ordinance demanding section thirteen one oh one of the Philadelphia Code entitled fixing and regulating rates and charges to extend the prevailing wage provisions of the code that apply in connection with the receipt of charity water rates and making technical changes, all under certain terms and conditions.
You're muted, Mike. You're muted again. Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Decker. These bills have been read on two different days. The question for each bill now is shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, if you call the roll, one being called, each council member shall vote aye on each of the bills, nay on each of the bills, or indicate those bills for which the member is voting aye and those bills for which the member is voting nay. Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Am I, am I audible, Mr. President?
Yes, you are, sir. Yeah, you're good. Mr. Decker, can you hear me?
I hear you, Mr. President. I, I just want to make sure you hear me.
No, I can hear you. Yeah, you're good.
Apparently, the members couldn't hear the titles of the bills.
No, we're good.
Just the last one. It was just the last bill.
I'm sorry. Let's read the last bill for the record.
Bill number two one zero four four three entitled an ordinance demanding chapter nine of the Philadelphia Code entitled Regulation of Businesses, Trades, and Professions by adding a new chapter related to hiring entities providing covered individuals with workforce development and career pathways information sheet. And bill number two one zero five zero zero entitled an ordinance demanding section thirteen one oh one of the Philadelphia Code entitled fixing and regulating rates and charges to extend the prevailing wage rec, provisions of the code that apply in connection with the receipt of charity water rates and make technical changes.
Okay. Well, uh, it is anticipated that, Mr. Decker, and to the members, uh, the next time we have this type of discussion, we'll be in room four hundred, uh, face to face. We will hopefully retire the technology of the virtual hearings of council. As much as we loved it, uh, it's time this can go another direction. But thank you, Mr. Decker. So with that, uh, I will proceed. Uh, these bills have been read on two, two different days. The question for each bill now is shall the bill pass finally? Uh, Mr. Decker, I'm going to ask you to call the roll and one being called, each council member shall vote aye on each of the bills, nay on each of the bills, or indicate those bills for which the member is voting aye and those bills for which the member is voting nay. And, Mr. Decker, can you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye on all bills.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Aye on all bills.
Councilman Dom?
Aye on all bills.
Councilwoman Gaultier?
Aye on all bills.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Aye on all bills.
Councilman Green?
Aye on all bills.
Councilwoman Jim?
Aye on all bills.
Councilman Heenan?
Aye on all bills.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye on all bills.
Councilman Jones is vo, voting aye on all bills. Councilman O?
Aye on all bills.
Councilman O'Neill? Councilman O'Neill? Councilwoman Parker?
Aye on all bills.
Councilwoman Gino N. Sanchez?
Aye on all bills.
Councilman Squillen?
Aye on all bills.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye on all bills.
Council President Clark?
Aye on all bills. Majority of all members have been voting affirmative for each of the bills. The bills on the consent agenda are passed. So we will now consider the bills and resolutions on a regular second meeting and final passes calendar. Mr. Decker, uh, could you please read the title of resolution number two one zero six one six?
A resolution honoring and congratulating Doc, Dr. Jason Wingard for his new position as the first black president of Temple University in its one hundred and thirty-seven-year history.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass for motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
Second.
Moved and properly seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Move to property second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
If the resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Bill Number 210421A.
An ordinance amending Section 17, 107 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Contractors Labor Management Relationships to create a new classification of covered airport service employees to receive prevailing wages, to extend prevailing wage requirements to third-party contracts with city-related agencies, lesses, and sublesses of the city, recipients of city financial assistance, and purchasers of city property to further provide for administration and enforcement, including reporting on contractor compliance with prevailing wage requirements and to provide for a civil action to remedy violations.
These bills have been read on two different days. The question now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Aye.
Councilman Dom? Councilwoman Gottié?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmar Richardson?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gim?
Aye.
Councilman Heenan?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones is voting aye. Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil? Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kinnoné Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilman Squilla?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Council President Clark?
Aye. Aye. Eyes are 16 and nays are 0. Majority of all members have been voting in affirmative. The bill passes.
Mr. Decker, please read the title of Bill Number 210330A.
An ordinance amending Chapter 9, 800 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Landlord and Tenant by adding a new Section 9, 810, entitled Perspective Tenant Screening Practices to regulate the application and selection process for housing units.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Brooks.
Thank you, Council President. I want to express my gratitude to the bills, both sponsors, council members, Gottié, Gim, Heenan, Thomas, for their commitment to housing justice and to the number of community organizations, renters and advocates who have tirelessly pushed these legislation forward. As a woman who has struggled firsthand with housing insecurity, it is meaningful to me to have introduced the Rental Access Act. This would reform the application and screening process to increase transparency and accountability and decrease discrimination and discrimination which disproportionately impacts working-class black women and their families. I commend this council body for shared commitment to increasing access to stable housing for all Philadelphians and addressing systems of inequalities. This year, we have been setting nationwide precedence for rental protections, and I am increasingly and incredibly proud to be leading people with you all. Thank you so much, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. This bill had been read on two different days. The question now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Aye.
Councilman Dom?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gottié?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmar Richardson?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gim?
Aye.
Councilman Heenan?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones is voting aye. Councilman O?
Nay.
Councilman O'Neil?
Aye. And, Council President, if I missed any votes on bills or resolutions, I'd like to be recorded as voting aye on them.
Thank you.
I'm voting aye on this one.
Thank you, Councilman. Let's look at the record. Let's look at the Councilman. O'Neil, a four to aye on all bills and resolutions to this point.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kinnoné Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilman Squilla?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye. I apologize. Aye.
Council President Clark?
Aye. Eyes are 16 and nays are 1. Majority of all members voting in affirmative. The bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Bill Number 210325.
An ordinance amending Title 22 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Public Employees Retirement Code by modifying the circumstances when certain city of Philadelphia employees are entitled to service connected death benefits during the pandemic.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Aye.
Councilman Dom?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gottié?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmar Richardson?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gim?
Aye.
Councilman Heenan?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones is voting aye. Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil?
Aye. Aye on nay?
Councilman O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kinnoné Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilman Squilla?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas? Councilman Thomas? Council President Clark?
Aye. Eyes are 17 and nays are 0. Majority of all members present voting in affirmative. The bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Bill Number 210320.
An ordinance to adopt a capital program for the six fiscal years 2022 through 2027 inclusive.
Okay. This bill had been read on two different days. The question now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Aye.
Councilman Dom?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gottié?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmar Richardson?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gim?
Aye.
Councilman Heenan?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones is voting aye. Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kinnoné Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilman Squilla?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Council President Clark?
Aye. Eyes are 17 and nays are 0. Majority of all members present voting in affirmative. The bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Bill Number 210321.
An ordinance to adopt a fiscal 2022 capital budget.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Aye.
Councilman Dom?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gottié?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmar Richardson?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gim?
Aye.
Councilman Heenan?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones is voting aye. Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kinnoné Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilman Squilla?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Council President Clark?
Aye. Eyes are 17 and nays are 0. Majority of all members have been voting in affirmative. The bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Bill Number 210505.
An ordinance authorizing the Procurement Commissioner and the Chief Executive Officer of Philadelphia International Airport on behalf of the city of Philadelphia to enter into an amendment to a concession agreement for the management of the Food, Beverage, Retail, and Passenger Services Program at Philadelphia International Airport and an amendment to the ancillary additional services agreement.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Aye.
Councilman Dom?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gottié?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmar Richardson?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gim?
Aye.
Councilman Heenan?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones is voting aye. Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kinnoné Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilman Squilla?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Council President Clark?
Aye. Eyes are 17 and nays are 0. Majority of all members present voting in affirmative. The bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Bill Number 200655.
An ordinance authorizing the Procurement Department on behalf of the city to enter into an amendment agreement with Axon Enterprises Incorporated for purchase of tasers by the city.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Nay.
Councilman Dom?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gottié?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmar Richardson?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gim?
Nay.
Councilman Heenan?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones is voting aye. Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kinnoné Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilman Squilla?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Nay.
Council President Clark?
Aye. Um, Councilwoman Brooks, what was her vote again? I'm sorry.
Councilwoman Brooks voted nay.
Nay. Okay. Eyes are 14 and nays are 3. Majority of members present have been voting in affirmative. The bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Bill Number 210322.
An ordinance adopting the operating budget for fiscal year 2022.
Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President. I have a brief comments I wanted to make before this vote. You know, in 2015, I came into this council body with the intent of bringing some of my experience of building a successful business from the ground up in Philadelphia and to use that knowledge to help Philadelphia address intractable issues of poverty and its related issues. For six years, I've watched our spending climb by over $1 billion with really no meaningful results of the very issues we all care about, underfunded schools, poverty, hunger, and violence. It seems what we're doing over and over again is not really working. For the past two months, I've said that the American Recovery Plan presented a moment in time, an opportunity to change the trajectory of our city, a moment to show the world that Philadelphia was open for business and would deliver on this promise by making our business and wage taxes competitive with cities regionally and across the U.S. I called for a long-term vision, real long-term business and wage tax reductions that would set a new tone and a new pathway for Philadelphia to change its ways. Thank you to Council President. Thank you. This body led the way and commissioned a study which concluded that the reductions in these taxes would create between 50 and 100,000 family-sustaining jobs over the next 10 years. And yet, my call to reduce our business and wage taxes to become more competitive was rejected. We're watching jobs slip away to our suburbs and other cities. We're ranked 26th on economic growth among the largest cities. And while other major cities in America are creating these family-sustaining jobs that pay $35,000 to $100,000 a year, we're creating low-wage jobs below $35,000. And why? It's because companies with family-sustaining jobs are not coming here because of the taxes and the burden of the net income tax and our quality of life issues. Let me be clear. I reject the tired 1980s commentary of trickle-down economics. It does not match the economic realities of 2021. I vocalize this over and over again. But this budget does not take advantage of our once-in-a-generation opportunity to change the economic trajectory of our city. It does not change the trajectory of poverty, hunger, and gun violence that will forever plague our city if we do not act in the fall with economic policies that are bold and intentional and meeting the challenges of today. So today, I am voting for this budget, which makes a significant investment in gun violence prevention. But I am concerned that no amount of investment in gun violence prevention in the short term will succeed in the long term without an economic strategy that pulls communities racked by violence out of poverty. We have the information and data we need already to make different decisions about our tax system. We have studied and studied and studied, and the studies tell us that we need to know what we already know. We have previous tax reform commissions that have made recommendations. We just keep ignoring the recommendations. The net income tax is the leading cause of our lack of good family-sustaining jobs here. We cannot ignore this issue another year. We need to fix this in the fall of 2021. We cannot and should not stand and watch jobs grow outside of Philadelphia when the decisions we make here could change that story. I look forward to the work ahead this summer, and I ask that this body in the fall, work together to make us competitive so we can grow family jobs here that pay $35,000 to $100,000 a year. I wholeheartedly believe that a job opportunity is the best program we can fund to turn this city around. It's the one investment that can make a real difference in the lives of our residents. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you for your work. This bill had been read on two different days. The question now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Aye.
Councilman Dom?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gaultier?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm?
Aye.
Councilman Heenan?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones is voting aye. Councilman O?
No.
Councilman O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kinnon Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilman Squilla?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Council President Clark?
Aye. Eyes are sixteen and age of one. The majority of members present voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title of two one zero three twenty-four.
An ordinance amending chapter nineteen fifteen hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Wage and Net Profits Tax by revising certain tax rates.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Aye.
Councilman Dom?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gaultier?
Nay.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm?
Nay.
Councilman Heenan?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones is voting aye. Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kinnon Sanchez?
No.
Councilman Squilla?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Council President Clark?
Aye, eyes of thirteen and age of four. The majority of all members have been voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title of two one zero four seventy-three.
An ordinance amending chapter fourteen one thousand of the Philadelphia Code entitled Historic Preservation to Establish a Temporary Demolition Auditorium with the properties in the area of Christian Street between Broad and Twentieth Streets.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Aye.
Councilman Dom?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gaultier?
Aye.
Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm?
Aye.
Councilman Heenan?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones is voting aye. Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kinnon Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilman Squilla?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Council President Clark?
Aye, eyes are seventeen and age of zero. The majority of members present voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title of bill two one zero four seventy-four.
An ordinance amending title fourteen of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by revising certain provisions of section fourteen seven oh two entitled Floor Area Height and Housing Unit Density Bonuses.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to offer an amendment to bill number two one zero four seven four. Copy amendment has been circulated on members in the House. I move to the adoption of the-
Second.
All those in favor, the most who are saying aye?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Eyes have it. Bill number two one zero four seventy-four has been amended. Bill number two one zero four seventy-four based on the final passage calendar at our next session of council. Mr. Decker, two one zero forty-four.
An ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning destinations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Broad Street, Erie Avenue, Hunting Park Avenue, Wissaken Avenue, Railroad Drive of Lake, Clarissa Street, Genada Street, Germantown Avenue, Hunting Park Avenue, and Roosevelt Boulevard.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Aye.
Councilman Dom?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gaultier?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm?
Aye.
Councilman Heenan?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones is voting aye. Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kinnon Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilman Squilla?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye. Apologize.
Council President Clark?
Aye, eyes of seventeen and age of zero. The majority of members present voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title of bill number two one zero five oh three.
An ordinance amending chapter ten three hundred entitled Minors to revise the evening curfew hours, modify the provisions for enforcement and penalties, and making technical changes.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Aye.
Councilman Dom?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gaultier?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm?
Aye.
Councilman Heenan?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones is voting aye. Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kinnon Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilman Squilla?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Council President Clark?
Aye, eyes are seventeen and age of zero. The majority of members present voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, do you have any additional resolutions?
I do, Mr. President. A resolution authorizing the Committee on Law and Government to hold public hearings to examine the benefits of providing childcare in courtrooms for jurors and others involved in court business to evaluate the feasibility of instituting such a childcare system in Philadelphia, introduced by Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
Thank you.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have it, the resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Commerce and Economic Development to hold hearings on the economic impact of the film industry in Philadelphia, introduced by Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
Thank you.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and congratulating Ms. Opal Lee for her tireless efforts to have Juneteenth recognized as a national holiday, introduced by Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of all the members of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated worldwide, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Thank you. Second, all in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring Mayor James F. Kenny's administration, the first judicial district and organizational partners for establishing Philadelphia's eviction diversion and rental assistance programs that have succeeded in keeping individuals and families housed, as well as protecting the public health during the COVID-nineteen pandemic and becoming a model program for the nation, introduced by Councilwoman Gimm.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Thank you so much, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the City Council Committee on Children and Youth to hold hearings on Philadelphia's juvenile probation system, examining opportunities to reduce racial inequities, review formal supervision in confinement, and support youth accessing programming, employment, and other resources, introduced by Councilwoman Gimm.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Thank you very much, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the East Banango industrial urban renewal area identified by office numbers and street addresses at twenty-nine twenty-nine Kingston Street and twenty-nine forty East Banango Street, introduced by Councilman Heenan.
Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and congratulating Reverend Joseph Capolon on his twenty-fifth jubilee, introduced by Councilman Heenan.
Chair again, this is Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Thank you.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed, eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Public Safety to hold hearings regarding creation of a program of voluntary public service work to be included as an alternative to criminal sentences, introduced by Councilman Jones on behalf of Council President Clark.
Councilwoman Parker?
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of Councilmember Jones, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Thank you.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed, eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank deeds conveying title to certain properties located in the fourth council-matic district.
Thank you. I'm so- thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of Councilmember Jones, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Thank you.
That is property second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of two seventeen East Slipicott Street, nineteen twelve North Leekow Street, and nineteen forty-four North Fifth Street located in the seventh council-matic district, introduced by Councilwoman Kinnon Sanchez.
Chair recognizes-
I move for its adoption. Second.
It's been property second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution for the Committee on Finance and the Committee on Transportation and Public Utilities to conduct joint hearings regarding the sustainability and diversification of the Philadelphia Gas Works, introduced by Councilman Green.
Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I want to thank my colleagues for supporting the resolution, in particular, Councilmembers Johnson and Gilmore Richardson. We have been working with the Mayor's Office of Sustainability, Philadelphia Gas Works and Gas Commission on a sustainability study that was funded by the Bloomberg Americas Climate Change Challenge. And we're coming to the conclusion of that study, which will give us perspective on how we look to possible perspectives on diversification of Philadelphia Gas Works. This is an opportune time to have the study completed, as many of you are following in D.C. a possible resolution to the idea of an American Jobs Plan from President Biden, which will give us some much-needed dollars in reference to infrastructure. And we're already starting to have that conversation within the Philadelphia Gas Works and how we can use some of the information from this study to help us prioritize initiatives where we can take advantage of the American Jobs Plan infrastructure opportunity and dollars for Philadelphia Gas Works. To remind my colleagues, the PGW started as a lighting company and transitioned into a heating company. And using this diversification study and the advantage of technology, as well as the issue of climate change, I see Philadelphia Gas Works also transitioning into the future and into a utility that makes sure that we are taking care of the benefits for all of our ratepayers, as well as making sure that our workforce, both labor and non-labor are protected, and also benefiting the city of Philadelphia. With that, Council President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing Kenneth C. Fraser upon the occasion of his retirement as Chief Executive Officer of Merck and Company Incorporated, introduced by Councilman Green.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. Kenneth Fraser is an institution and also has been a leader in helping to do so many things coming from North Philadelphia, as well as graduating from the Penn State University. And he has been a model leader as a CEO of Merck, rising through the ranks as a lawyer in the private sector, and then becoming counsel for Merck, and then becoming chief executive officer. He's been profiled at Smith Playground as one of the leaders coming from North Philadelphia that has been memorialized earlier this year, and he's really been an inspiration to African-American lawyers and all lawyers, as well as those in the private sector through his phenomenal career. And he demonstrates what someone, a young black boy from North Philadelphia, can accomplish not only in the city of Philadelphia, but on the world stage. He's been a phenomenal inspiration for so many of us through the years, and with that, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Thank you.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed, eyes have it, and North Philadelphia is own has been adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Commerce and Economic Development to hold a hearing to examine the exclusion of the Israeli food truck, Rochava, from a subsequently canceled cultural fair in Philadelphia to raise awareness of a recent rise in anti-Semitism and to discuss best practices for organizations and cultural event planners facing similar situations in the future, introduced by Councilman Dom.
Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution calling for the Committee on Law and Government to hold hearings to examine the feasibility of offering election materials in additional languages, exploring ballot randomization, and enabling safer and more secure elections to adequately prepare for and participate in local, state, and federal elections, introduced by Councilman Thomas.
Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed, eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank deeds conveying title to certain properties located in the first council-matic district, introduced by Councilman Squilla.
Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. That concludes our calendar for today. And our next order of business is speeches, product recognizing members regarding speeches. I will note for the record, at this time, we will use the chat feature available in Microsoft Team to allow members to signify that they wish to be recognized. In order to test, to comply with the Sunshine Act, the chat feature must only be used for this particular purpose. With that said, speeches on behalf of the authority, chair recognizes Councilwoman Brooks.
Thank you so much, Council President. I want to say a few words about the budget. Last year, I voted against the budget because it failed to significantly address the concerns that we were hearing from constituents as protests erupted across the city and across the world in response to police violence and systemic racism. I felt that we came short in delivering on what working-class people, black and brown people, and Philadelphians who have been for so long failed by the status quo, what they were demanding. And in this year's budget, I see many of the same issues. The rage, the devastation, and pain is still there. It's just quieter. It's not in the streets, but in the homes of our community members who lost loved ones as a result of contracting COVID-nineteen at their low-wage jobs. It exists in the hearts of parents who are mourning children whose lives were stolen by gun violence. It's in the lives of working-class people who still haven't been able to recover from the financial losses of the pandemic. The suffering is there, and whether it takes in the form of housing insecurity or hung in isolation or trauma, and the call to address the pain of Philadelphians is just as great as last year. What's the difference in this year's budget is we have the resources to address this pain. With the historic influx of funds that our city is receiving from the American Rescue Plan, we have a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to use those dollars to make deep investments in the communities who are struggling the most. But instead of meeting this bold level of funding with the equally funding, equally bold vision, we have chosen incremental change. And we meet deep-rooted issues with devastating challenges with cautious solutions. When I look at this budget, I ask myself, are we doing enough for my neighbors? And are we meeting the needs of the most vulnerable, our marginalized constituents? Are we investing in young people and providing them with the resources that they need to be safe, stable, and healthy? And frankly, I'm not sure. I've been doing a lot of reflecting as I close out my second budget cycle as a freshman city council member, and I've learned a great deal about the vibe- And I've learned a great deal about the value of not just having a seat at the table, but engaging with others at the table. So while I may disagree with aspects of this budget, such as how it increases police funding without significantly expanding funding for parks and racks in our libraries, I also recognize that this budget is a result of compromise. And it includes funding that significantly, significantly improve our city's services and the lives of our constituents. I recognize that I am just as accountable to this amended budget as my colleagues are. And I recognize the hard work that each of us has put into this process. And while I may be disappointed with aspects of it, I want to make good faith effort in engaging with my colleagues and continue to work towards transformative, long-lasting solutions to the numerous crises facing our city today. We share many of the same values, but have different ideas of how to get there. So today, I voted yes in favor of those shared values, many of which are reflected in the amended budget. I'm voting in favor of robust eviction prevention funding and the expansion of non-police first responders and the enforcement of labor laws for our most vulnerable workers. I'm voting in favor of a renewed dedication to our arts and cultural institutions, funding for the protection of our immigrant neighbors, accountability for those who have provided services to our young people, and an unprecedented investment in neighborhood anti-violence programming. I'm voting in favor of our collective ability, not only to act on our values through budgetary process, but through community programming and groundbreaking legislation like the Rinner Protection we passed today. Together, along with working-class Philadelphians, we showed up en masse to make our voices heard during the budget proceedings. And movement groups have fought tirelessly against tax cuts that would benefit wealthy suburbanites as CEOs. And I believe we will continue to make strides towards a more equitable and just Philadelphia. With this vote, I encourage us all, myself included, to continue to do better and do more. I want to thank my council colleagues for all of your hard work this year. And I want to thank the community members who testified and advocated during this budget process. Thank you so much, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And thank you. Thank you for your commitment. On behalf of the majority, Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. And I want to start by saying thank you to Reverend Kathy for her phenomenal prayer this morning to close out, hopefully, what will be, what is our final session, will hopefully be a start to a great summer. I think that she, she hopefully got us off to a good start. And thank you, Reverend Kathy. I appreciate it. Today, it was an honor for me to introduce a new ordinance when we're looking at this idea of the motor vehicle code and how we enforce the motor vehicle code here in the city of Philadelphia. For those who don't know, back in October, I introduced legislation to essentially address the motor vehicle code. And when we introduced that legislation back in October, we introduced it from the perspective of being a legislator and looking to put ourselves in a position to address what we know to be a civil rights issue, not just in the city of Philadelphia, but all across the country. All of us have seen the videos. We know the stories. And I'm sure that some of my colleagues on council firsthand, like myself, have witnessed and been victims to some of the things that happen when you're unjustly stopped and put in a position where your civil rights are violated simply because you're operating a motor vehicle code. And maybe there's a small infraction, but often there isn't. So when we introduced the bill in October, the idea would, again, was to address the issue. And throughout the course of the process of negotiating with the executive branch of government, with the legal department, as well as with various stakeholders who are passionate about this issue, it put us in a position where we felt like the most effective way to be able to do this work, to be able to address this civil rights crisis that we have, not just in Philadelphia, but all across the country, was to do it from a collaborative perspective. When we talk about it being a civil rights issue, I know a lot of people don't necessarily agree with that, but the logic is there and the numbers prove exactly what I'm saying today. In the city of Philadelphia, where approximately 40% of our drivers are black, black men, they, that same demographic makes up nearly 70% of the stops. Even in neighborhoods where black people are not the majority residents, even in neighborhoods where black people are not most likely to be found with contraband or illegal weapons, black men are still the majority of the stops. When you're looking at these stops in the city of Philadelphia, approximately over, not approximately, I apologize, over 90% of these vehicle stops do not result in anything. No contraband being found, no weapons being found, sometimes not even a ticket being given to the person who was officially pulled over. And so when we think about the best way to address this issue, and we think about what we need to do to put ourselves in a position to minimize some of these interactions, I think that we have found what we believe to be is the beginning of a solution. And so today, I introduce the ordinance that hopefully one day will be married with an executive order from the administration that will look to address the motor vehicle code and how we enforce the motor vehicle code in the city of Philadelphia, looking at driving violations that do not create or present a public safety hazard, and trying to find new means and mechanisms as it relates to enforcing these infractions without that enforcement resulting in an actual traffic stop. I'm extremely excited to be able to introduce this ordinance today. I want to say thank you to all the partners and stakeholders who were involved in this process. I also want to say thank you to my staff, who spent months working and in negotiation with a number of different partners to put us in a position where we have this hopefully historic legislation that we see today. What we're trying to do is, again, a collaborative effort that we're hoping is not just implemented here in the city of Philadelphia, but is something that can be used as a strategy in urban areas all across the country to put us in a position where we do not see some of the horrendous and heartbreaking videos where people do not have to worry about being pulled over by police officers as a rite of passage, just because you're a black man, where people do not have to think about the type of car that they have to purchase or buy, and the probability of the car that they're purchasing putting them in a position where they're more likely to be pulled over. So I'm going to say thank you, Council President, for allowing me the time to be able to talk about what I feel like is a historic piece of legislation. I want to say thank you to all the stakeholders who took the time over the last several months to put us in a position to be where we are right now. Also, I want to say thank you to all my colleagues on council, who decided to co-sponsor this bill, as well as those who provided advice, resources, suggestions, and recommendations to help put me in a position to be able to hopefully start the conversation as it relates to solutions to what we know. It's not just a civil rights issue, but a national catastrophe. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you for the hard work. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bautia.
Thank you, Council President, and good afternoon, everyone. The most significant thing to me about the budget we just passed is that it represents a victory for everyone in the fight to end gun violence here in the city of Philadelphia. There is no more urgent priority than addressing this violence, both for people living in the neighborhoods where it's a daily occurrence and for the health of our city as a whole. Having to be hyper vigilant every time you leave home, feeling afraid to let your kids play outside, feeling trapped in your home, this is trauma. No one should have to live like this. But black and brown neighborhoods have been struggling through this violence for years now. So I want to thank all of the advocates, the council president, and my council colleagues who worked shoulder to shoulder to make these historic investments happen in this budget. We won major new funding, $68 million for programs and services that will stabilize neighborhoods, prevent violence, improve families' lives, and address the trauma that has been circulating through our communities for far too long. In particular, I want to highlight the amount of new money that will be going to grassroots organizations that have been on the ground for years, doing the work day in and day out to reach the small number of individuals who are actually involved in this violence. $20 million in additional funding will be going to these groups. That's a tenfold increase in the amount we're distributing through targeted community investment grants, and that's huge. At the same time, whether or not we will look back on this moment as a turning point in our fight against gun violence depends on the way that we put these investments into action. Some of the $68 million will go towards initiatives like flight remediation and jobs programs. Programs like these are proven to alleviate violence, but only if they are targeted towards the communities that need the most and towards the individuals at highest risk of participating in gun violence. And ensuring that these investments are targeted appropriately will require rigorous and frequent measurement and evaluation, along with a great deal of transparency on behalf of the mayor's administration. I look forward to working with my colleagues and with the mayor's office to make that happen. And as significant as this investment is, we don't want this to be a one-time event. Over the years, we've seen a clear correlation between disinvestment in vulnerable neighborhoods and a rise in violence. And so I hope that the mayor's administration will recognize that to prevent violence, we need to make significant investments over time to create and build prosperous neighborhoods. Those organizations I mentioned earlier, the ones that are on the ground, doing the real work to save lives, to heal, and to build community, they should not have to operate on shoestring budgets. They should not have to fight and plead for support year after year. Sustainable funding will help break the cycle of violence in the long term. I also want to say that while I'm pleased with these investments to address our city's gun violence crisis, the tax cuts in the budget are beyond unfortunate. Millions of dollars that are being devoted to the mayor's wage tax cut could have gone towards any number of city programs that need additional funding to carry out their mission. In this moment, when so many Philadelphians are still struggling, I cannot endure sacrificing revenue in this way. But every budget is the project of a negotiation. And overall, I think we've landed on a budget that reflects how dire of a crisis gun violence has become in our city. And now that it's passed, our work turns to implementation and ensuring that this money gets spent appropriately. So to the residents and neighborhoods that have been terrorized by gun violence for far too long, I want to say help is on the way. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. And thank you for your continued dedicating work. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kim.
Thank you so much, Council President. Like my colleagues, I want to acknowledge the hard work that went into this budget. It represents an unprecedented level of collaboration, commitment, and single-mindedness around critical issues that define what not just an economic recovery needs to look like in our city, but true prosperity for all. And I'm honored to be part of a council body that has been so deeply committed to the critical issue of ending gun violence, of seeking healing, of restoring restorative practices back to young people who have too often felt abandoned by the city hall. And in particular, I think what it also reflects is the tremendous impact of what happens when our residents are so deeply engaged throughout this process. I want to thank the hundreds of people who gave public testimony weighing in on the most important issues of our day, whether it was mobile crisis units for mental health, emergency response, to essential workers and the city workers and our city prisons and our streets department and transit, 911 dispatchers, and public school teachers. And in particular, I want to express gratitude and appreciation for so many of the youth and young people who came forward, some of whom are system-involved, and all of whom who dream of a better city and a better life for themselves and their families. These young people weighed in on juvenile justice reforms at the state level, about the challenges of probation and residential placement. Most of all, they weighed in about the importance and love of schools, of family, community, and their own hopes and dreams. One of our young people said to us, invest in our humanity. We have a right to dream, and your policies must support that. We heard you, and we are working harder than ever to meet that expectation. Sometimes we fall short, but we have, in this body, shown more commitment than ever to meeting the expectations of those who deserve so much better. And though we approve this budget today, I think, as my colleagues mentioned earlier, the most important thing is, is that this is the beginning, that the determination on how exactly funds will be used is an ongoing process for all of us. That includes expanding supports for our small business recovery, ensuring that anti-violence funds gets to the community and organizing groups that are actually doing the work, restoring services to core institutions like our recreation centers, parks, and libraries, and promising those young people, especially in the zip codes most impacted and harmed by violence and poverty, that they have a guarantee, that there is a promise waiting for them from us. To all of those who engage so deeply, we appreciate you so much, and we will need your continued engagement throughout this year. I'm also deeply appreciative of all my colleagues who supported so many different initiatives, including eviction prevention and the youth ombudsman office. And we know that our Philadelphians and our young people deserve so much more, that we need even more efforts concentrated in those zip codes and at those schools most impacted, that we need an even bigger commitment to an equitable recovery and growth. And given the past year, though, we have shown actually what happens and the incredible impact we can have when we do come together to address a core issue like housing stability, where we're able to cut evictions to just a quarter of what they were even a year ago and become a national model. We can do the same with gun violence, with the opioid crisis, with climate change, and our public schools. That is why I think it's so critically important that we continue to talk about the impact of this budget, of taxation, and the importance of us evolving the conversations about taxes. Again, it is important to remember that the budget that we pass still has to make up for a shortfall that was projected to be $450 million. There continues to be shortfalls in each and every single year of the five-year plan, and those are only plugged by federal relief funds. Less than half of the city jobs that were lost in the pandemic have even been restored as of now. And it has been projected that we could permanently lose 15% of non-resident wage taxpayers. That number could turn out to be lower, but it could also be higher. It's impossible to predict all the longer-term ways in which our tax base could be changing as a result of the pandemic right now. We have massive budget holes. And what we need is to also get help to those who are struggling the most. That is what an American Rescue Plan promised, and that is our responsibility as a council body. And that's why I was glad to introduce with my council colleagues a comprehensive look at our tax structure and consider changes deliberately based on where we are going as a city to update our city tax structure and to make it simpler and fairer. Equity does not mean giving everyone the same modest amount. Equity means giving the most to those who have been hurt the most. And there are some in our city who have actually done well this year, maybe even made significant profits. Others have been absolutely devastated, and most are just holding their heads above water. Our city residents have also had vastly different impacts. Some are able to work from home and even gained income. But others have suffered tremendous losses in income and health and the trauma of violence that has disproportionately harmed only some of our neighborhoods. We remain the highest-poverty big city in the nation after two decades of pursuing tax cuts. We cannot cut our way to prosperity. And in the meantime, knowledge and trends about municipal finance, taxations, and subsidies has evolved since the formation of the last tax commission back in 2009, as our economic world is also changing rapidly. City services matter to our residents more than ever. Clean streets, vibrant economic corridors in all parts of the city, modern school facilities. And thus, a growing body of research is changing how we understand the role of taxes in developing not just job growth, but with specific attention to racial equity and inclusive growth and support of our cities. Now more than ever, the livable city is the city of the future to retain and keep our longtime residents. It is about us, about our children attending safe and strong schools, about our residents being able to be supported and building and expanding small and local business rooms, about immigrant businesses, and understanding that this is about investing in our own strengths and assets, not looking at what we don't have all the time, but what we do have so we can grow even more. I want to thank the council president and the mayor for taking steps to collaborate on an effort for a new tax working group with a diverse set of experts that reflect the diverse needs of our city and not just merely recycling the same theories of the past. I look forward to a collaborative and open process to engage a meaningful conversation and analysis. And finally, just to close out this, you know, year that's been extraordinary on many different levels, I want to express gratitude to the entire city council staff, to all those who labored in our tech department, to Michael Decker and his team, to Kalia and so many. labored in our tech department, to Michael Decker and his team, to Kalia and so many who made sure that there was a vibrant, engaged, and attentive set of people who just kept pushing all the way through this and made this body be what it can be. Thank you very much, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you for you, Mahalke. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. And I want to thank all of my colleagues for their hard work. And while we passed another budget, I think we all want and expect more for our city and its citizens. Growing a budget by over $1 billion in this administration should yield tangible and visible outcomes. And I think many are looking for these outcomes in our neighborhoods. The disconnect between our communities and our budgets are real. And while we're receiving $1.4 billion from the Biden administration, we know that there's a lot more to come. And so we have to ask ourselves, how are those dollars going to be spent? We have to stay focused on the resources at all times to ensure that they are not wasted. I also wanted to pivot just briefly as Chair of the Health and Human Services Committee to an article that was covered in both the Philadelphia Inquirer and the Philadelphia Tribune, which really says it all, which was around patient care and how do hospitals serve patients of color. A report on racial inclusivity finds many healthcare providers have far to go in caring for diverse communities. Some healthcare providers, like Temple Hospital, rank high in terms of being most inclusive, others not so good. What is clear from this report and our ongoing calls to appoint Dr. Stanford as health commissioner is that we need someone on the ground to fix these inequities now, right now. Why are we even conducting a national search when Dr. Stanford pulled her own resources together to save the lives of at-risk Philadelphians? How much are we spending on this search anyway? And I would say, whether it's $1 or $1 million, it's too much when we know that we have a highly qualified physician that undoubtedly saved lives right here at the ready, ready to jump into action. There can be no doubt that Philadelphia's death toll would have been significantly higher had she not sprung into action. And so I asked Mayor Kenny, what is the holdup? The other thing I just wanted to mention, and mentioning that we need a health commissioner, is I wanted to talk briefly, Mr. President, about a recent tour, a series of tours that I've been doing around stop-and-go establishments in our communities. And we passed a bill in 2017, but we have not made the amount of change that I think that we can make. And there were a lot of really eye-opening findings that we discovered on these tours, one of which is that the level of cleanliness in some of these restaurants, as per the Health Department, isn't always a reason to be closed down. So, you know, if cleanliness is not an issue, or if cleanliness is an issue, it's not an issue for, you know, closing down restaurants and citing these particular types of restaurants. And also, the alcohol sales that are allowed are questionable. So if you can sell bottles of malt liquor in a small bottle, which look like alcohol, but because they say malt liquor, you can still purchase those items. And I say all of this to say that we need a health commissioner at the ready. We have, you know, listen, I've spoken with our acting health commissioner. She's, you know, great and a wonderful individual, but we need to appoint, I believe, Dr. Stanford to this position right away so that we can get down to some of these disparities that exist in our community. We need to do it. We need to do it right away, and we need a health commissioner at the ready. So as we continue to make these rounds with the Health Department, with LNI, it is glaringly clear that these businesses only operate in certain neighborhoods, they only operate by a certain business model, and they do not operate in a way that constitutes a restaurant license. There's a whole lot more I could say on this issue, but we will be bringing out our findings from our tour shortly, Mr. President. We'll be issuing a report from our office that displays some of the glaring issues that we see in these establishments that operate in most cases with only a microwave. Did you know that you could be a restaurant with just a microwave? So that was something that we learned as well. And so we're going to continue this work, as well as some of the other work that we're doing on the Philadelphia Promise Trust Fund. And as we mentioned today, the automotive care shop bill, which we hope to have passed in the fall, which is going to require that auto repair and body shops take in the business that they are able to handle or else house those cars and vehicles somewhere, but not take up neighborhood parking. So again, we're addressing those quality-of-life issues that we think are really going to make a big difference for all Philadelphians. So I thank you, Mr. President, for all of your hard work and for your support for our agenda in the Eighth District and throughout the city of Philadelphia. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman, and thank you for your continued due diligence on the stop-and-go issue that is consistently a problem in a lot of neighborhoods that lead to other things. Thank you. Look forward to it.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. Just have a couple announcements that I would like to make. First and foremost, this evening at Yasha Banquet Hall, located at 23rd and Snyder Avenue, there will be a meeting hosted by Otis, which is the Office of Transportation, Infrastructure, and Sustainability regarding the repaving and redesign of Washington Avenue. And again, that's a meeting at Yasha Banquet Hall, 23rd and Snyder Avenue, 6:00 p.m., hosted by Otis, the Office of Transportation, Infrastructure, and Sustainability. And the meeting will be in regards to the repaving and redesigning of Washington Avenue. It's also hosted by the Point Breeze Development Coalition. Also, Council President, next Wednesday on June 30th, we will be hosting our Peace Not Guns Call to Action event at Wharton Square Park, located at 23rd and Wharton Streets, and that will begin at 6:00 p.m. And again, it's our Peace Not Guns Call to Action at Wharton Square Park, located at 23rd and Wharton Streets, and begins at 6:00 p.m. First and foremost, Council President, I want to thank my colleagues. I want to thank all of the advocates as relates to our current progress as relates to the budget and supporting in addressing the issue of census gun violence here in the city of Philadelphia. I want to thank for all of the colleagues that have signed on to the letter advocating for the $100 million from the administration, which I believe created a paradigm shift in how we address and make a priority here in City Council, the issue of census gun violence. I want to thank you, Council President, for your marathon Herculean negotiation, back and forth, day in and day out regarding this budget process. It wasn't an easy process because there was a lot of competing interests. And I know the papers can have their narrative, community groups can have their narrative, but unless you're at the table, day in and day out, putting the time in, then you really wouldn't have an actual true aspect of what all of the negotiation entails. So I just want to thank you and the whole budget team as a whole for sitting around the table and figuring it out. And obviously, we have come out stronger than we have going in as it specifically relates to addressing the issue of census gun violence here in the city of Philadelphia. And I also like to note for the record, though, this isn't the first sign that we have risen to the occasion when it comes to addressing census issue of gun violence. I mean, at one point in time, there was not an Office of Violence Prevention here in the city of Philadelphia. And through some advocacy, and us working in City Council, thus, we have a new Office of Violence Prevention. At one particular point in time, we didn't have community-based target grants provided to community groups here in the city of Philadelphia. And so through the work that we have consistently done as a body, we have shown time and time again that we will rise to the occasion based upon the issues and concerns in which our constituents are asking for it. And so I just want to commend you, but also this body as a whole and collectively. State Representative Regina Young always liked to say that teamwork makes the dream work. I want to also acknowledge my colleagues who I've worked with in the working group, Captain Gilmar Richardson, as well as Helen McGimm, as well as Jamie Gaudier. As we went back and forth around what are some of the key areas that we wanted to focus on regarding what we call the peace budget, but collectively as a whole, I believe this is a paradigm shift that we all have worked on and making sure that we continue this, make this the number one issue here in the city of Philadelphia. And now, really, the real work starts, right? At the end of the day, the real work starts just to make sure that we follow up on what we said we were going to do, and I'm pretty confident that we will do that. I also want to take a moment and to sincerely thank all of my colleagues for the affirmative vote in making sure that we address quality healthcare and a prevailing wage for the predominantly African-American and brown workers who keep our Philadelphia International Airport moving forward. We will continue to work in partnership with American Airlines, who continue to work in partnership with those small businesses at the Philadelphia International Airport that provide businesses to those who are catering to Philadelphia International Airport. But at the end of the day, this particular vote was picking people over profits. At the end of the day, you have workers who are working day in and day out on the front line through the pandemic. Some have lost family members, some continue to go to work that's sick. Our own health commissioner said we have to be wary of Delta, some Delta variant, which means that we're not really out the woods when it comes to COVID-19. And so with that being said, it's imperative that we make sure that those workers who are working day in and day out receive the type of quality healthcare that they deserve as well as a prevailing wage. And actually, when you look at the neighboring states, we're really starting from a position of a deficit when it comes to making sure that we even go beyond $15,000 an hour, hopefully in the future, where in New York, their prevailing wage reaches $19,000 an hour. And so at the end of the day, it's about advocating and fighting for those who need a voice, and certainly, that's those individuals who are on the ground, working day in and day out at the Philadelphia International Airport. And so with that being said, Council President, again, I just want to thank you for your hard work, and I want to thank all of my colleagues for their support as we continue to move the city of Philadelphia forward. And also, I thank the administration for, at the same time, still sitting down and reevaluating, but although we're going to make sure that the process is addressed appropriately, but it's a partnership at the end of the day, because I believe personally, we are rolling in the same direction, and that's to move the city of Philadelphia forward and protect those who really need a voice. And so again, thank you, Council President. To the tech staff, I don't think we're going to come back, hopefully, in the fall due to Zoom-type Microsoft Teams situations. So we just thank them for getting us through this pandemic, and I hope everybody enjoys this summer, and God bless with another good council session. Take care, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you for your personal and business passionate consistency around this gun violence issue. I know while it is a part of your job, it's a part of your heart. I mean, this is about what you are, and I just want to thank you so much for this keeping on pushing and being willing to talk to anybody about this issue and make sure we get this done. I appreciate you so much. The issue with respect to the Herculean hours that I put in, that's why they gave me the biggest office in the city council, so they had more room to do. But thank you, Councilman. Thank you so much. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kimona Sanchez.
Thank you, Council President. I'll be brief, but I just wanted to take a moment again to add to some of the comments of my colleagues and thank all of the advocacy around this very difficult budget, for the people who testified and for the people that we represent that sometimes don't have the luxury of being able to come to council and have their voices heard, but those of us who've lived in these communities all our lives, you know, during this budget process, we talk data, and everybody knows how much I love data and following the numbers. So this budget process for me is something that I enjoy doing, partly because, to me, the community that I represent are not numbers. Those are stories that I know. Those are families that we know. And so that's why when my colleagues, as Councilmember Johnson spoke about, when we make these issues important, they're very personal to us. They really are personal issues, and that's why we got elected, and that's why we do the work that we do. So I also want to thank you, Council President Clark. This was a very challenging time, and many of us were pulling at you in many, many different directions. Sitting at the table making the sausage sometimes isn't pretty. Obtaining fairness depends on whose lenses you're looking through. And so not everybody, when we talk about equitable inclusion, accessible process, it doesn't mean the same thing to all of us, and we learned that during COVID. And so I look forward, as we move forward, you know, the devil's always in the details, how we implement, how we manage. And I thank you for allowing everyone here to be heard and to have their voices not only heard, but really included in the process in this advocacy work that we do. And, you know, I want to congratulate everyone, and I want to thank the administration for understanding that this was a different moment in time and that we couldn't just do what we normally did, and we needed to do something different. Not as bold as I would have liked, but definitely a different, as Councilmember Johnson said, definitely a paradigm shift. So thank you, Council President, and to all the staff who worked behind the scenes to put all of this stuff together, particularly our tech folks. I think next budget will be easier, we'll be right in front of each other. I find it much, much more productive to be sitting across the table from folks. And I must say, I miss the colleagues, and I miss all of the interactions that take place as we do the work that we do every single day, serving the citizens of Philadelphia. So thanks again, Council President, and to the budget work group and everyone involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. I believe that concludes the speeches that are listed. So I want to thank the colleagues, and this is a legislative branch, something that I view as being very special, to ask people not to pay attention to what happens in Washington, pay more attention to what happens in the city of Philadelphia, because it is truly a collective effort. People have the level of opportunity to have input very transparent way, but there's no other place. Unfortunately, we didn't have the opportunity to have a public comment in public, but despite that, we had a record number of people calling in and having a public comment on this budget process. This shows that this is the place where we will have real input. And I want to thank the members for their continued due diligence. And although I say this at the end of every session, this is the best council that I've ever worked with, and I'm going to continue to say it throughout the process, but the reality is, you all put that work in, put that work in, and we came out of some very challenging times last year. This time, we were basically talking about how many people we had to lay off. We were talking about how many services we had to cut. And we were talking about how we were going to make it through this pandemic, this worldwide pandemic, you know, people's inability to even go out of their households. So we come forward, we work through it. It continues to be a challenge, but we've made a lot of progress. So I just want to say that I thank all of them. I do want to, like other individuals, want to thank the staff, all of you on staff, for their hard work. Want to thank the administration, Rob and Marissa. Those negotiations, those Herculean negotiations, had to have somebody on the other side of the table, so Rob and Marissa. And I want to thank our team, congratulate our team, Bob McGurn, his first time out, Ami Patel, her first time out, they did a really great job. So this has been an experience, and I think that we had a somewhat positive outcome. Did we do everything for everybody? Absolutely not. Do we ever? Absolutely not. But we addressed all of the issues to the degree that we could. But we must move forward, we must work into the implementation phase, and we need to look at the future and how we take it to the next level. Because when you start to be satisfied with your work, then probably time to move on. There never be enough. I want to thank one individual in particular who threw out all of us. We were Zooming and teaming and, you know, not even remotely thinking about coming down here, came down here every day, and that's Mike Decker. I want to thank him. Mike was here every day, by himself, in most instances. Mike, I just want to thank you, man, for what you've done, your work. If you try to leave, man, we're going to put a lock on the door, so don't even think you're leaving here, because we really need you. So to everybody, guys, thank you all so much for this process. We are better as a result of that, and hopefully... We are better as a result of that, and hopefully, by being better, we can make the city of Philadelphia as much better as we can be ahead. Also, with that, I would like to recognize Councilwoman Parker for motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I moved that council stand adjourned until Thursday, September 16, 2021, at 10:00 a.m.
And the second, you all don't want to...
Second.
I was going to say, you all don't want to leave?
Second.
It has been moved in probably second to council stand adjourned till Thursday, September 16, 2021, at 10:00 a.m. All who favor indicate by saying aye.
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 If it was opposed, aye, cap, motion carried. Thank you all very much. I love you, guys.
Thank you.[1768.13]